Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming tonight. This November 6, 2004, regular meeting of the Fairfax County School Board will now come to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, a moment of silence, and the performance of the National Anthem by the Union Mill Elementary School's sixth-grade strings under the direction of Melissa Brown.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under our own individual with liberty and justice.
Thank you. Ms. Schultz would like to say something to you.
Well, certainly I would, not only because this is a Springfield School District, but because I'm a Union Mill parent. So, I want to acknowledge Principal Kathleen Case, who's here, and this phenomenal -- I think that's got to be one of the largest elementary strings presentations we've had for the board. So, I want to thank my school very much and how very proud I am of them and the music programs they put on at Union Mill.
And I'd say to add to that, thank you, parents, for bringing your students out tonight to allow us to enjoy their wonderful talents. And again, Ms. Case, thank you for being here as well. So, great job.
Next, the certification of our closed meeting. In order to comply with Section 2.2-3712D of the November 6, 2014, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the board during the closed meeting. The foregoing shall also be deemed to include the certification of each school board member who served on a student disciplinary committee, and those closed committee meetings are lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Section 2.2-3711A2 of the Code of Virginia, and that only student disciplinary matters were heard, discussed, or considered in those closed meetings. A motion to accept. Mr. Moon, seconded by Ms. Smith. All in favor? Mr. Moon, Ms. Reed, Mr. McElveen, Ms. Hines, Ms. Strauss, Ms. Smith, Ms. Darnett Kofax, Mr. Velkoff, Ms. McGlocklin, Ms. Strauss, Ms. Evans. Abstentions? Mr. Stork and Ms. Schultz. Thank you. The motion passes. Next, we have announcements. A few announcements before we begin tonight's meeting. If you would like to access tonight's agenda and related meeting documents, you can do so by going to the FCPS website and select School Board, and then Upcoming Meetings and Agendas. The meeting is also being streamed live on FCPS website homepage. Click on Watch School Board Live. If you have signed up to speak before the board during citizen participation, please turn in 16 copies of your remarks at this time to the deputy clerk, Ms. Goddard, sitting at the section to my right. If you would like to review a copy of the agenda and any agenda item that is being discussed tonight, that information is also on the table by the auditorium entrance. Please turn off or silence your cell phone, and I will now call on our student representative, Mr. Latif, for announcements.
Thank you. We have quite a few announcements. We are recognizing Veterans Day on November 11. Veterans Day, formerly Armistice Day, is the anniversary of the armistice which was signed in the Forest of Compinge by the Allies, and I'm pretty sure I'm pronouncing that wrong, and the Germans in 1918, ending World War I after four years of conflict. At 5:00 a.m. on Monday, November 11, 1918, the Germans signed the armistice, and order was issued for all firing to cease, so the hostilities of the First World War ended. This day began with the laying down of arms, blowing of whistles, impromptu parades, and closing of places of business. All over the globe, there were many demonstrations no doubt the world had never seen before witness such rejoicing. Veterans Day is observed annually in the United States in honor of all those, living and dead, who served in the United States Armed Forces. The school board directs school personnel to provide students with instructional activities that honors veterans and recognize the role of the military in American democracy. Many schools have special events to which they invite veterans and a member of the school community on active duty. We are also recognizing American Education Week from November 16 to the 22nd. American Education Week was established in 1921 by the National Education Association, NEA, to raise public awareness of the importance of public education in America. This year's theme, "Raise Your Hand for Student Success," presents all Americans with the opportunity to celebrate public education and honor those who ensure that every child receives a quality education. As part of the observance, community leaders are invited to serve as educators for a day in order to get a glimpse in the day of the life of a school employee. American Education Week features a special observance on each day of the week, including parents, educational support professionals, and substitute educators. And lastly, we are recognizing Geography Awareness Week from November 16 to the 22nd. Geography Awareness Week is an opportunity to focus on geography as a critical component of a 21st century education. The 2014 theme, "The Future of Food," focuses on the environmental and societal problems that involve food, staple food crops of the world, and food education. Geography Awareness Week was established by Presidential Proclamation in 1987 to underscore the importance of geographic understanding to ensure our nation's economic competitiveness, national security, environmental sustainability, and livability of our communities in the 21st century. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Latif. And now we go on to -- I will pass the gavel to Mr. Velkoff at this time.
And I call on Ms. Darnett Kofax for a resolution.
And I invite Ms. Barbara Hunter up to the podium for this resolution. And this is a resolution honoring Ms. Barbara Hunter. We will then have pictures, and then we will then have comments by the board, and Ms. Hunter will have the last word as our communications executive. Whereas Ms. Barbara Hunter has served Fairfax County Public Schools for seven years with excellence and dedication throughout her tenure as Assistant Superintendent of Communications and Community Outreach. Ms. Hunter skillfully managed all internal and external communications for FCPS and established collaborative partnerships with the community, local businesses, and the media, all while attaining a calm demeanor and a wonderful sense of humor. And whereas Ms. Hunter served as the host of the FCPS NewsHour cable television program and conducted hundreds of interviews with the superintendent leadership team members, principals, teachers, students, and community members, she oversaw the redesign of the FCPS website, which receives more than 2 million visits a month, and the My FCPS newsletters, including the community newsletter launched in 2012. And whereas Ms. Hunter led FCPS into the world of social media, she directed the creation of a Facebook page, which is the second-largest school division Facebook account with more than 48,000 fans. She launched FCPS en español on Facebook, as well as a Twitter account with more than 37,000 followers, and the FCPS YouTube channel, which has more than 970 videos posted and more than 180,000 views. And whereas, Ms. Hunter worked collaboratively with the school board to plan community engagement initiatives throughout the division. She served as staff liaison to the board's Public Engagement Committee and helped launch the annual FCPS Educational Summit. She guided the creation of 127 businesses and community partnerships and 22 one-time partnerships, and developed automation tools, including FCPS Partnership Starter and FCPS Donations Portal, to improve community outreach to essential stakeholders. And whereas, Ms. Hunter directed and supported the efforts of Family and School Partnerships Office and the Parent and Resource Center to promote programs and services that encourage student success and increase parental awareness of the resources and assistance offered by FCPS to benefit its students, she closely worked with the Fairfax County Council of PTAs to increase parental involvement throughout the system. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Fairfax County School Board extends its highest commendation and deepest appreciation to Barbara M. Hunter for her dedication to public education and her enthusiastic support of the success of students, teachers, and administrators in Fairfax County Public Schools. I so move.
Is there a second? Ms. Hines? All those in favor of this resolution? It is unanimous.
We would now like the opportunity to take some pictures with Ms. Hunter, so her friends and colleagues, if you would like to come forward, please do so.
Ms. Darnett Kofax.
Yes. We're gonna miss you. But when I first got on the school board, I was so impressed with so many of the FCPS staff. They were professional, they were knowledgeable, and they were caring. These adjectives describe many of the staff, and I was honored to know that I would be working with such dedicated individuals. But as a communications professional myself in my life before sitting on the school board, I really could not wait to meet with a familiar face on Channel 21, Ms. Barbara Hunter. Yes, I was a 21 watcher before I sat on the board. And the first morning I spent with Barbara, it was evident that not only did she capture those characteristics that I mentioned earlier, professional, knowledgeable, and caring, but she was also warm and engaging and had an all-around talent as a communications professional. She could anchor a show with ease, she could write the press releases, she could manage the media, she organized community events, and was happy at every one of them. And she did it in a manner that was engaging and with a smile, and it always made me wonder, what do you have in that Starbucks cup, Barbara? But as the years passed and events unfolded, you realized when you worked with Barbara, it was truly who you are. You are hardworking, you are confident, you are skillful, you are witty, and you are polished. I have learned much from you these past years. I so appreciate the opportunity to have worked with you. And FCPS is going to miss you. They're gonna miss you a lot. I will miss you as well. We wish you the best. We know the Alexandria school system is getting a prize.
Next, Ms. Hines.
Well, Barbara, I've been on the Public Engagement Committee now in my second year, and I think probably of all the school board committees, we probably work the closest with you. You're always in there with us, helping us do things right and do things professionally. You know, I think your job is one of those jobs where, like, when you do it well, no one notices. You know what I mean? Because we're an enormous system, and it's a huge, huge job. I feel like you're constantly balancing and doing triage, figuring out what you need to address and how to do it, and it's just clearly very, very hard work all the time. And you always gave with a smile, and it was like you were not only helping us figure out what to say, but supporting us too, and as, just personally, you know, in how we went through it. And I feel like in the time, I was looking at some of the things in the resolution that you've put in place with social media, and it's like the job just grows and grows. You probably felt that way, and yet the team doesn't grow and grow, right? So, you're just doing more, and everyone who works with you is doing more. So, again, I think you're probably one of those unsung heroes, and we really have benefited so much from your time with us. You're responsive, supportive, as Ms. Darnett Kofax said, always professional, and just a great pleasure to work with, a great person I feel like I'm very fortunate to have gotten to know. And I think my lesson, many lessons from you, because I'm not a communications professional, I've taken many lessons from you, but one is just that unerring positivity. You know, no matter what's going on in the room, you have to be the cool head, and that's something that takes practice, I imagine, and that I'm trying to get better at. But I know Alexandria is very fortunate to have you, and you won't be far, which is good, but we will miss you here, and I just can't thank you enough for all you've done for us. Thank you.
Next is Ms. Strauss.
I know when you first came and we did one of those Myers-Briggs, whatever they were called, you and me and Chris Donahue have the same initials.
Yes.
And we decided, what fun. You're TV star, communication expert, bringing us into the social media realm, always fun and a pleasure to work with, always, always upbeat. And as a school board struggled with trying to be more communicative, you always kept trying to find ways to do what it was that we wanted to do, even when we asked for very difficult things. You would have your pencil, and you'd think, well, okay, scratch this one off, let's try it the other way. You never said no, you never said, no, it can't be done. It was, I will find a way, and we will figure it out. And so, we've come a very long way, and I think in seven years, where we were seven years ago, and you have helped us get there, and with a lot of fun, with a lot of positive momentum, always being up. You're smiling now, and I'm thinking, oh, I'm sad. I'm glad you're not going far, and I know Alexandria, I'm sure they're very happy, they've asked you to come and work with them, so their students and their schools will definitely benefit. But we all need to get together again every now and then, but you've been wonderful to work with, absolutely wonderful, and we will miss you.
Thank you.
Mr. Moon.
Thank you, Mr. Velkoff. Ms. Hunter, I have not actually changed to say thank you, especially for the two-year period of time when we got to see each other at least once a week, all in the morning on Wednesdays, that you brought to us in the chairman's meeting some good news, some really, really good news, but there were some really to the opposite, and you were very, you have that calm demeanor to when everybody was going, you know, poked up, you know, blow pressure going on. You had always been able to tell us to calm down, it's just another day, and thank you, and we'll miss you.
Thank you.
Ms. Evans.
Thank you. You know, I was thinking about all the changes in communications in the time, in the time that you've been here with FCPS, and it is absolutely incredible when we think of what communications were like when you first came and what they are now. So, you have led us into kind of the brave new world of Facebook, of Twitter, of YouTube, of whatever else is out there that I don't know about, and you do, but, and so, thank you for bringing us where we are today, because that was, it's been a huge change, and you've managed to roll with that and change with that. You know, I've also had the pleasure of working with you as a member of Public Engagement Committee. And so, of course, we look every, every month, we look at our communications plan, and of course, it's just exhausting to look at the communications plan, much less to think of someone being in charge of all of this and much, much more. So, it's an incredible amount that you have overseen, and you've overseen it so very well. So, I want to thank you for that, particularly when I think about how many requests you have to deal with, just in a day, not only our long-range communication strategy, and I think, well, gee, when was the last time I even managed to write my newsletter? But you're doing three times that every day. So, I want to thank you for your tireless work and for your calm and your good grace, and we will miss you. We will miss you and your smile. So, thank you, and don't be a stranger.
Thank you.
Mrs. Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Velkoff. We've worked on many projects over the years, haven't we? Some of the things you just can't make up. Truth is stranger than fiction. But I want to talk a little bit about one time when we were brainstorming it. It was several years ago now, I'm sure you recall, and I kept saying, you know, I think we should have some kind of summary that's very brief, that highlights all the wonderful things that go on in our schools. And we talked about it, we bantered it around, and Barbara's the one who took that vision and made it the State of the Schools report, which now you see as an insert in the Washington Post. And just the other day when it came out, I was so proud, I showed it to my husband, and I said, you know, I remember when we first started talking about this. So, I really admired that about you, to take just a nugget of an idea and to turn it into something so beautiful and so effective as a tool, to communicate so much information but in a very creative and concise manner. And the same is true, I think, for many other documents that we've done, such as the Citizen's Guide to the Budget is another one, too, that I think is, really, you put your mark on all of our documents in so many ways with your creative spirit and your ability to understand what it is we're trying to say and make it sing. I'll miss in particular some of the things that others have alluded to, your high energy, your can-do spirit, your sense of humor, your ability to juggle so many balls. I've never heard you ever say no, always figures out a way to get things done. I'll honestly miss our talks about family, and I hope that that'll continue. I wish you all the best in your new job in Alexandria, I'm glad it's not that far away, and just all the best. And I just wanted to do a special shout-out to your staff, because you can tell what a charismatic leader you are and how much you all care about each other. And so, to that, I say, you know what? That is something very admirable as a boss and as a person, and I know as a mom, that you care, and it shows, and we're gonna miss you.
From the sounds we just heard from Gallows Road, I'm reminded of another one of your characteristics, as you've put out many a fire over the years. Next is Mr. Stork.
I don't know if I can top that comment, because it's absolutely true, and I see your face turn a little bit red, so it's probably, you can remember many, many, many of them, and some of them not so pleasant for any of us, but regardless, I think of my MBA class, we talked about, in marketing, we talked about the four Ps, right? I think most of us have heard that. Well, I think of you and communications, I think of four Ps, I think were essential to how you did your job, and how you did, and why you did your job so well. You're personable, professional, positive, and just as important, polished, and I think those things capture what I've always thought and admired and appreciated about you and the work that you've done on behalf of us. We've come a long way, I know you know that, and I think it's been said, but I remember many of our initial conversations about, and frankly, what you started with in terms of the department and where it is now, they're really two different, they're two different, really, places, and that's important for all of us, and not just changed by the social media, but really changed because of your approach and your attitude towards how to address things. So, it's been greatly and deeply valued and appreciated by me, and I think I have one more, I guess, edge maybe over other board members, is I had the pleasure of having you be a constituent of the Mount Vernon district, and you're...
And I voted for you, too.
And, well, you know, I hear that all the time. No, but you're, and the fact that you had children, I know at least your son is at Mount Vernon High School and successfully graduated from there, which I always appreciate. I know that was one of your, one of our conversations many times about how important that was, and our school system makes, helps our kids get through some tough times, and ultimately helps them be successful in spite of themselves sometimes. But as a parent and as a constituent, and most importantly, as a colleague, I deeply thank you for all your work on our behalf.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stork. Next, I have Mr. McElveen.
Thank you, Mr. Velkoff. Interesting that I would follow Mr. Stork, because I remember the first PEC meeting that I observed before I got on the board, and that was when Mr. Stork was chair of PEC. And I, it was a very meaningful experience, because I saw that you were delving so deep into what was referred to as the green sheet. And for those of you who don't know what the green sheet is, it is the master schedule of all communications in the system and this annual calendar for these things. And I just thought, man, does she have to deal with this every month? Because it was, Mr. Stork was very exhaustive in his pursuit of everything on that green sheet, but you always did take it with a smile, and I'm happy to say tonight that there is no more green sheet. And I'm happy to say tonight that there is no more green sheet for you. So congratulations, we still have to put up with the thing. I will say that Ms. Darnat Kofax was not entirely exhaustive in her explanation of all that you did, because you did bring us YouTube testimonies, you did bring us school board member newsletters, and that's been very helpful for the board to get our message out and to help people bring their perspectives to us. And so that will be very well remembered, and it's not always easy to please this group up here, but you always did. And even though you won't be going far, just remember, you'll always be a pecker.
Thank you.
So, Ms. Hunter, I remember the day I met you. It turns out it was also the day that I met my colleague, Ms. McGlocklin. It was a public forum on the grading policy, and I think in the summer of 2008. I've, like many others here on the board, I've noticed just how you're cool as a cucumber and you've handled some very difficult situations. I remember one in particular, it was a very emotional experience, and I was a candidate at the time. And it was a sobering experience for me to recognize the responsibility that I would be taking on as a public official should I be elected, and it's a lesson I will never forget. And then finally, I've seen you in situations where the bullets are flying from all directions, and you know what? If I were to turn off the sound on the TV, I'd think you were hosting a public television fundraiser. So again, I just thank you for all you've done for us and wish you the very best.
Thank you.
Dr. Gerza.
I thought maybe I was next. Barbara, first of all, I want to thank you for your service to Fairfax County Public Schools and congratulate you. I know this is a step that gets you closer to home and takes you actually back to the school system that you've been in before. So I know they're very, very happy to have you back, because they know what they're getting, and we know what we're losing. And so I'll tell you that the area of communications is one of the most difficult and complex in any school system, but particularly large school systems. And if you look at other school systems across the country, they'll say, it's always one thing that we could always do better is communication. You never get it, it's never perfect. But I will tell you, it's one of the most important things that we do as well, and you've done just extraordinary work. Many of the things have already been referenced that you have led, created, made better for us. Many multiple communications tools, which was mentioned before, focus groups that you've conducted on very important issues, such as a blueprint for change. You facilitated those, you managed them, you led them, you created conditions where we got meaningful feedback from our community. User voice, much of the work that we've done around budget communications, you helped lead. And I'll just say that overall, just a very positive ambassador for our school system in every way, shape, and form, and I very, very much appreciate that. And you have surrounded yourself with great people. You have wonderful people in your department. I think it says a lot about a leader is to hire great people, and you've done that. So I'm confident that the great work that you've done will continue because of the wonderful team that you've brought to us and created for us. I will tell you personally, Barbara was very instrumental and helpful in the transition for me. I think the first person I communicated with here in Fairfax County, besides the school board, obviously, was Barbara, and made me feel very good about coming here to Fairfax County Public Schools. So, and I'll miss the interviews that we would have at least once or twice a month. She did that very, very well in terms of the various interviews that went on. So I just want to thank you. You've had a very positive impact. Lots of the great work that you're doing have done, will continue to help us into the future, so I thank you for that. And I know that I speak on behalf of all the wonderful leadership team members that were here tonight, and some that are sitting here, some that may have had to leave. Barbara has been such a key member of this family, of this leadership team family. So I know I'm speaking on behalf of all these folks up here. We'll miss you, but we always consider you part of Fairfax County Public Schools, and we stand ready to help you in any way we can. We just wish you the very best.
Thank you so much.
So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hunter.
Well, thank you very much. Those words were incredibly touching, and the resolution is amazing, because I don't think we think about all that we do day-to-day, and when we hear it like that, it's pretty awesome. So thank you so much. Your words are deeply appreciated. Nearly seven years ago, to this day, I stood in front of you saying hello with Linda Burke and ready to take on the great challenge of leading a brand-new department called Communications and Community Outreach. I am so proud of what we've been able to accomplish during these seven years, and I'm just going to mention a couple that maybe you didn't touch on. We did launch two comprehensive surveys, the Annual Trust and Confidence Survey of Parents and Non-Parents, and the Biennial Family School Connections Survey, both of which truly grounds our communication and outreach actions in research, which is really important. We created a family reunification curriculum, which is groundbreaking training to help school districts around the country help to ease the reunification of families and children who have been separated due to immigration. It's really awesome. As you noted, we put FCPS on the social media map. Facebook, Twitter, Flickr, YouTube, Pinterest, Instagram, we're truly a model for school districts across the nation, and especially with the launch of our newest Facebook page in Spanish. We re-energize our Business and Community Partnerships Program that has resulted in hundreds of new partners and a really cool tool that you mentioned, that I like to call as our own match.com for schools and partners. And we provide resources and support to thousands of families who have children with special needs through the amazing work of our Parent Resource Center and staff. As you've noted, and I feel deeply in my heart, I couldn't have accomplished any of these alone, but only with an incredible team of professionals who are with us this evening. And I'd like them to stand when I call their name. Jay Grant, John Torrey, Gail Holloman, Darrell Craig, and Kathleen Thomas. They each lead their teams with enthusiasm, experience, grace, creativity, and talent, and I will miss you. With this caliber professionalism among these team leaders and the staff members who comprise these teams, many of whom are here tonight, my job was made infinitely easier, as was noted. I deeply believe in hiring the best, and they are the best, and entrusting them to do their jobs. Really, I see my role more as of a cheerleader, a cheerleader for Communications and Community Outreach Team, a cheerleader for Fairfax County Public Schools, and a cheerleader for public education. So I was recently cleaning out my garage, and I came across my high school cheerling megaphone. How awesome is that? Now, two things may surprise you about this, that first, I grew up with the nickname Barbie. Well, maybe that doesn't surprise you so much. And that second, our high school mascot was an owl. We were the Owls, which is really scary, right, Steve? Steve also graduated from Westminster High School in Westminster, Maryland. But this megaphone reminded me of the core of my leadership style, not only about the core of my leadership style, but about the many people who have cheered me on to do my best work in school communications. Let me take a minute to recognize my biggest cheerleader who is here tonight, my beau, Alex Johnston. Thank you for all you do to support me. There are two other cheerleaders who are not with me tonight because of geography, my children, Robert and Elizabeth, and they'd better be watching this livestreamed. I told them to do that. As you all know, and painfully so, our families make sacrifices for the long hours we work to lead our schools. My children were no different. I'll put that down so you can see me and I can see you. My children were no different, as they had to endure my endless evening meetings, both here in Fairfax and in Alexandria City Schools. As a mom, I admit I had some guilt about that, I think all working parents do. But you know what psychologists say, and many of them are here tonight, and correct me if I'm wrong, if mom or dad is happy in their work, then the kids will be fine with it. Yes? All right, you're going to agree anyway. So I have a story to share about my daughter, Lizzie, whom some of you know. When I was working as Communications Director for Alexandria City Public Schools, my kids were really young. I lived close enough to work so I could come home and make them dinner. You know that working mom's guilt, run home, make dinner, run back to work, and go back in the evening for school board meetings. And it was near Christmas, and I had the house all decorated with Christmas decorations. One of her favorite Christmas decorations was our creche, which I displayed in the dining room. She was about four years old, and she was role-playing with two of the figures while I was cooking dinner in the kitchen. And this is how the conversation went. She was assuming the role of Mary in the conversation, and she said, now, angel, you're going to have to watch the baby Jesus tonight, because I have a school board meeting. True story. So I peeked around the corner into the dining room after hearing that and figured out she seemed pretty matter-of-fact about the whole school board meeting thing, so I guess I was, too. I thank both of my children, Robert and Elizabeth, for their continuing love and support. So now, with megaphone in hand, I will continue to cheer on the families, students, and leaders of Alexandria City Public Schools. But before I do, I want to make sure that you have a reminder to cheer the people in your life on, too. Are we ready? Give me an F. Give me a C. Give me a P. Give me an S. What do we have? Yes. Thank you.
I return the gavel to Chairman Darnat Kofax.
Thank you so much, and please stay in touch with us. Next, we have the Recognition of School Psychology Awareness Week, and I call on Ms. Strauss.
Thank you. Now that the school psychologist have told Barbara that she, as a professional mom, was exactly right in all of her decisions. I would like to honor some very important people who provide critical services to our children and our families in Fairfax County Public Schools. This is School Psychology Awareness Week, November 10th to the 14th. The theme for 2014 School Psychology Awareness Week is Strive, Grow, and Thrive, with a focus on engaging students at all levels of learning and development to promote personal achievement, growth, and resilience, as well as a sense of connectedness and well-being. School psychologists work in all educational settings to positively impact the academic and social-emotional development of students through the provision of mental health services that build resilience, promote developmental assets, and foster good citizenship. Their most important responsibility is to ensure the welfare and safety of students. To fulfill that responsibility, school psychologists strive to attain and maintain high standards of empirically-based practice and to promote professional ethics in their daily work. School psychologists collaborate with teachers, parents, and school personnel to create safe, healthy, and supportive learning environments for all students. School psychologists collaborate with school teams to address students' learning and behavioral problems through implementation of multi-tiered prevention and intervention strategies. They suggest improvements to classroom management strategies or parenting techniques, bring knowledge of assessment and data collection to measure progress and outcomes of interventions, and encourage practices that effectively promote student learning and mental wellness. They are a critical part of our schools, of our families, and our community. They help all of us do a better job in teaching and learning and do a better job as parents and as community members. I would like to invite the psychologists who are with us tonight to come up and have a picture with us. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming, and thank you. I hear there's cookies in the back for us, we so appreciate it. I will now pass the gavel back to Mr. Velkoff.
And I call on Ms. Darnat Kofax for a resolution.
This will be the resolution naming the Spirit Shop at Hayfield Secondary School, and I invite the family of Mr. Tremaine to the lectern before I begin to speak up here, Mr. Tremaine's family. Over there.
Yeah.
Thank you all for coming tonight, we really appreciate this. It's hard for me, too. But I'm going to talk about your dad for a moment. If enthusiasm and the ability to make those around you feel empowered and cared for could contribute to an individual's longevity, then Dave Tremaine should have lived to be 100. But unfortunately, our world does not work that way. And while so many of us in the community are still working through our feelings on how we miss the enormous orange tennis shoes and how cool overalls can look on somebody who's six foot four, we mostly miss the smile and the conversation starter that begins with, how's it going, buddy? All of those who knew Dave were touched by his positive, funny, and caring ways. The best we can do now to honor him is to take his positivity... The best we can do now to honor him is to take his positivity and pass it forward. The spirit who he is will always be in our hearts. The spirit he exhibited when he rocked Hayfield Orange will never leave our memories. It is with respect to his memory and to his spirit that I read the resolution tonight to name the Spirit Shop at Hayfield Secondary School the David S. Tremaine Spirit Shop. Whereas David S. Tremaine was highly regarded educator for over two decades and enthusiastically encouraged students to show support and spirit for their school and to become better citizens, scholars, and athletes. And whereas Mr. Tremaine served as principal of Hayfield Secondary School from 2010 until his untimely passing in 2014, during that time, he was untiring in his efforts to bring the Hayfield community together as one school. His spirited style of leadership motivated students, faculty, and staff, and inspired them to act with ambition and purpose. Mr. Tremaine strongly believed that students who felt pride in themselves and in their school could achieve great academic, athletic, and personal successes. Whereas Mr. Tremaine was Hayfield Secondary School's number-one fan, as he cheered on Hayfield Secondary School's every opportunity, he was a constant present in the classrooms and hallways and a fixture at extracurricular activities. He encouraged students, faculty, and staff to support each other in academic, athletic, and performing arts endeavors, and he frequently invoked the slogan "One Team, One Goal" to remind the Hayfield community of their common bond as Hayfield Hawks. Whereas Mr. Tremaine's fondness for wearing orange attire would most likely never be matched by future Hayfield administrators, his wardrobe included his orange business suit, orange and white checkered overalls, orange pants and orange shirts. He enthusiastically high-fived those students, faculty, and staff who accept his challenge to also wear orange. Mr. Tremaine certainly defined what it meant to rock the orange, and he did so with great pride and great style. And whereas his time at Hayfield Secondary, Mr. Tremaine was an exceptional role model for students, faculty, and staff. He created a caring and supportive learning environment for all members of the Hayfield community. He inspired others to be courageous in times of struggle, to maintain unwavering integrity, and to possess a fierce positive attitude. Mr. Tremaine was committed to promoting the esprit de corps that united the Hayfield community. Now, therefore be it resolved that Fairfax County -- that the Fairfax County School Board, in recognition of his dedicated service to the Hayfield Secondary School community and his valued contributions to Fairfax Public Schools, hereby name the Spirit Shop at Hayfield Secondary School the David S. Tremaine Spirit Shop in honor of his memory. I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stork. Sorry. All those in favor of the resolution? It is unanimous. Ms. Darnett Kofax.
And we'd like to take some photographs of you with your friends and family, and then if you'd like to speak, you're more than welcome to.
I will call on Mr. Stork and any of the board members who would like to make comments.
Thank you, Mr. Velkoff. And I do, I want to just mention a couple things, and I think much -- Ms. Darnett Kofax did a wonderful job, I thought, of really describing and providing us with a sense of the power and the energy and the enthusiasm that Dave Tremaine brought to Hayfield and frankly brought to our community for a long, long time. The culmination of that clearly was his work with Hayfield, but I frankly can't think, I can't even imagine a more fitting naming than that of a Spirit Shop. I mean, when I think of Dave Tremaine, I think of his spirit now, and spirit now in multiple ways, but clearly an energy, an enthusiasm, a commitment to kids, a playfulness, and all the things that we, all the kind of energy, positive energy, that helps us to kind of see the world in a possibility way, looking for the possibilities, looking for what we can make happen. That was his way of getting all of us to maybe step outside of ourselves and step outside of that particular, that maybe that test we have tomorrow, or that job that we have to do the next day, but to think about the possibilities of what we can be and the possibilities of what our school can be, and channeling that energy into something that we all can be a part of and frankly make far greater than the sum of ourselves. So Spirit Shop, can't have a better name than the spirit of Dave Tremaine in that shop. So thank you all for coming tonight, and thank you for sharing Dave with all of us because it truly was a joy and a pleasure and one that I will, I'll never forget. So I thank you again.
Ms. McLaughlin.
I just wanted to briefly share that even though Hayfield's not in my Braddock district, I had the unique privilege of working with Principal Tremaine in a meeting where we were trying to talk about some changes to our discipline practices. And I was so moved by his incredible love and care for wanting to do the right thing for children. And even though I didn't work with him directly with the school, it was evident right away that he was unique and that he was truly looking to touch the lives of each and every child that came to his school in the best way possible. I have heard so many wonderful stories about him in the years I've been here on the board, and I just wanted to say to his family that his spirit, his legacy, it will live on in all of us who were honored enough to have spent any time with him at all. And I truly hope that you feel the love, support, and sympathies coming from our school board, our school system, and again, the community. So I'm so pleased we could see you here tonight to honor a remarkable husband, father, and family member and friend. And I hope you will continue to be comforted by the wonderful memories you share of a man whose legacy will live on for many years to come.
Dr. Garza.
Yes. Again, thank you all so much for being here tonight. I will tell you that I was really fortunate, I believe, to have had the opportunity to spend just this one short year getting to know Dave Tremaine. And it was obvious the very first time I met him that he was a very positive, just force for good. Just everything he did was very positive and always student-centric. He cared so deeply about the kids at Hayfield Secondary Schools, but he was a very positive leader throughout our system. I would go to middle school and high school meetings, and he was always thoughtful and positive and really added a lot to the conversation. So it was very easy to very quickly gain just a wonderful admiration and respect for him. So I think it's very appropriate that the Spirit Shop be named after him because he had such a strong, positive spirit and a love for Hayfield Secondary Schools. And I think, again, it's evidence of how one person can really, really make a difference and have such a positive impact. And as was pointed out by others here tonight, and that impact will be lasting at the school and in our system. He will not be forgotten, and he certainly has had great impact on our system. So thank you all for being here tonight and wish his family the very, very best. I know he's watching you and very proud of you, has always been. I know he will continue to be very proud of his family.
Thank you. I return the gavel to Ms. Darnett Kofax.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is citizen participation. Fairfax County citizens who would like to address the school board should arrange to be placed on the speakers list by signing up online at www.fcpss.edu or by calling the school board office at 571-423-1075. If the concern is a group concern, please consider appointing a spokesperson, and while the spokesperson is speaking, those in support may stand to show their support. The school board will not hear statements involving issues that have been scheduled for public hearings, such as the capital improvement program, budget, or boundaries, or personal attacks on any person. Complaints regarding individual students or school-based employees should not be raised at public meetings. Any such concern should be directed to the appropriate school principal or other school official. Citizens are encouraged to write the school board on any school-related topic. Speakers are limited, speakers are requested to limit their remarks to not more than three minutes and provide at least 16 copies of their presentations for distribution to the board. Tonight, two citizens have signed up to address the board, Barry Weinstein and Kimberly Adams. Mr. Weinstein.
Madam Chairman, esteemed school board members, and Mr. Latif, our student rep. My name is Barry Weinstein, the legislative representative to the General Assembly for the Fairfax County Federation of Teachers. I come here tonight for the sole purpose to express our appreciation and support for the 2015 legislative package and the recommendation to support Policy 1415, nondiscrimination as detailed in the agenda item. Diversity is our strength, and like you, we believe this extends to the LGBT community of employees. We believe the legislative package's analysis of the political landscape, rigorous examination of the needs of students, teachers, and families, the local and state physical realities and limitations have been expertly reflected by the hard work and efforts of Mr. Malloy and his staff in the Office of Government Affairs. We want you to know that FCFT will have a full-time presence in Richmond, will be there to assist Mr. Malloy in any way he sees fit to further what we view as a common legislative agenda. He has been a tremendous source of information and help in our lobbying efforts in the past, and we look forward to building upon this relationship this session and in the future. We know the facts. For Janus SOQ, formula required local expenditures $3.3 billion. In 2013, the cost of localities was $6.8 billion, more than twice what the formula requires. Over time, students' needs have not changed; in fact, they have increased. Enrollment has been increasing and is projected to increase more. 14.1% of all students lived in poverty in 2012 and an 18% increase from 2007. These numbers, too, are increasing. In Virginia, 41% of all students got free or reduced lunch in fall of 2013, up 24% from 2007. Despite statewide increases in enrollment of 4.3% since 2009, state direct aid has decreased 17%, and the state sheriff's support for operations has also decreased. Unfunded mandates, which sap our resources and time, have increased. In the words of the FCPS legislative package, "It is essential that the state fully meet its constitutional responsibility to adequately fund K-12 education, including full funding for the biannual re-benchmarking of the Virginia standards of quality. We enthusiastically stand in solidarity with our school board and strongly support realistic and fully funded standards of quality, which keep pace with the ever-evolving accountability requirements. Recognition of the cost of living variations in state funding formulas in order to be, in order to more accurately determine a local's ability to pay. Restoration of full funding for cost of competing adjustments for personnel support. Appropriate and adequate recognition, state funding formulas of increased costs required to serve children with greater service needs." We wish to thank you and Mr. Malloy, and wish you great success with the legislative package. Thank you very much.
Ms. Adams.
Good evening, Chairman, Darnett Kofax, members of the school board, and Dr. Garza. My name is Kimberly Adams, and I do represent the Fairfax Education Association. I speak tonight to your legislative program as well as American Education Week. When you approach lawmakers in Richmond and Washington, DC, it's critical to have a targeted plan for changes you'd like to see around your education policies. FEA has looked over your legislative program, and we are happy to see many of the priorities mirror our own, including repeal of the A- through F grading scale for individual schools, opposing erosion of the Virginia retirement system, and request for reinstatement of cost of competing for full funding of our support personnel. I know many of you will join us in a couple of weeks at FEA to discuss these topics and more as we head into the legislative session. I'm proud to speak on behalf of our members locally in Richmond and occasionally on Capitol Hill. Our state and national organizations, the VEA and NEA, have been lobbying on behalf of educators for decades. Our members are involved in the development and promotion of our collective voice in public education policy. I hope that we can find areas where we can work together in FCPS to be a stronger, more effective in our efforts toward better education policy, both in Virginia and our nation. American Education Week will be celebrated November 16th through 22nd, as Mr. Latif pointed out. This designation is given to that week by National Education Association to honor all those who work in public schools every day to ensure that every child receives a quality education. As professional educators, we continue to ask that you maintain high standards, low class sizes, and competitive salary and benefits for all your employees. During this American Education Week, teachers and support personnel in our schools often receive thanks from the parents and community members around us, and FEA takes this opportunity to remind you that your workforce remains world-class. On another note, yesterday at the Superintendent's Teacher Advisory Council meeting, Dr. Garza discussed the professional development this past week. I will briefly mention to you that at FEA, we believe the recent professional development that was handed down on Monday and Tuesday was seen as somewhat less than valuable by your professional educators. Much of the training was neither individualized nor took into consideration skills that your staff has already in place. We expect and look forward to delivery of high-quality professional development for all our educators, and we know that Dr. Garza is committed to improving the professional development that will be rolled out in the future. We look forward to being part of that process. We are told that input will be solicited to create meaningful professional development that is tailored to the needs of your staff and addresses timely issues in our classrooms. Careful consideration must be made around the time set aside at our work sites on in-service and teacher workdays. It should be teacher-directed, teacher-led. Through Portrait of a Graduate, we are hopeful that student needs will be continued to be identified, and most importantly, your teachers will be given opportunities to delve into meaningful work and participate in creating high-quality content for our students. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming tonight. Next on our gen, next on our agenda, student representative matters. I call on Mr. Latif again.
Thank you. Chairman Darnett Kofax, Dr. Garza, members of the school board. First things first, I did not forget to buy shaving cream this month. It is No Shave November in honor of prostate cancer awareness, so thousands of men across the country are doing their part. Mr. Stork, I concede from now. Month is young. Since our last meeting, I was pleased to attend the Real Food for Kids Food Day at Mount Eagle Elementary School on October 24th, along with Chairman Kofax, Dr. Garza, and Ms. Evans. We watched the students learn the basics of yoga, how our food gets from our farm, from farms to our plates, and much more. On October 25th, I attended the Fairfax Education Summit held at Edison High School. I enjoyed Dr. Garza's presentation. I enjoyed Dr. Garza's presentation of our new Portrait of a Graduate, and I especially enjoyed the panel of FCPS alumni who discussed how their time in Fairfax County public schools affected their educational and career paths. Just this past Tuesday, I met with Ms. Evans and Ms. Hines, along with my student appointee to the School Health Advisory Committee, Ben Press from Madison High School. We discussed some of the causes of unhealthy stress that affect our students, and our hope is that this important discussion will grow to a countywide level as it should. Now that the issue of later high school start times has been voted upon, I've refocused my priorities, as I mentioned in the last school board meeting, of my term on my visits to schools across the county and on combating the various causes of unhealthy stress that affect our students each and every day. As for my student representative listening tour, as promised at my first school board meeting back in July, I visited a high or secondary school in each of our five regions by the end of the first quarter. In Region 1, I'm letting my nearly daily conversations with Langley's student leaders count as my visit for this quarter, but I'm looking forward to visiting another Region 1 school next quarter. One of the key school-specific issues at Langley is our upcoming renovation. I'm glad, a new business item you can see up there, is the award of contract to be voted upon next school board meeting, so we're looking forward to that getting off the ground. In Region 2, I visited Jeb Stuart High School on October 29th, and I had the pleasure of having Ms. Evans accompany me. We met with Stuart's principal, along with some of their student leaders, who gave us a sense of the issues that were important to them. We discussed how students value important teacher-student relationships, not only, that do not only foster better performance in the classroom, but also act as another support for students' mental health and wellness. In Region 3, I dropped by Mount Vernon High School on October the 20th to meet with their leadership class. They emphasized the issue of heavy workloads, as did many students across the county who I spoke with, and how they would like us to develop some system through which teachers can coordinate testing schedules so students don't end up having a test in nearly every single one of their classes, all on the same day, usually at the end of the quarter. In Region 4, I visited Robinson Secondary School, along with Ms. Schultz. On October the 28th, we met with Principal Eline, along with a roundtable of students, and we had a great discussion ranging from heavy workloads to mental health, two topics that I again heard nearly everywhere. Students at Robinson all agreed that the new crisis text line is much more accessible than a phone line. However, they also agreed that the best support system for a student is a good relationship with a teacher they can trust and count on. Fostering these positive relationships should be a priority for teachers, school administrators, and the school board. Having a trusted adult to reach out to for help is one of the greatest assets a student can have, so I'm really looking forward to seeing if we can foster those relationships. And lastly, in Region 5, I visited Woodson High School back on October the 27th, and I met with their very well-organized student leadership class. When it comes to workload, I surveyed the class at the request of Ms. McLaughlin, and the results were definitely worrying, but sadly, they were not surprising to me at all. Out of the 41 students in the room, only five students said they had less than two hours of homework a night. 20 students said they had over two hours, and 16 students said they had over three hours, one girl having over five. Aside from the obvious dent in a student's sleep schedule, as we've mentioned a lot, heavy workloads also take away from after-school activities that many students, myself included, are very passionate about, and they also take away from family time. For example, one student I spoke with at Woodson was stuck inside taking notes from her history textbook while the rest of her family decorated her home for Halloween. On the topic of mental health and wellness, I was pleased to hear about the student-led initiatives being managed by Woodson's leadership classes. From having incoming freshmen sign a pledge to seek help when and if they need it, to working to remove the stigma around seeking help, Woodson's leadership students are doing a great job of supporting their fellow peers, and that's really a model other schools can look at. Let me say that these visits do not plan themselves, and I'd like to thank each and every student who met with me during these visits, and I'd like to thank those members of the Student Advisory Council who worked at each of their individual schools to schedule each visit for me, so I really do thank them. Looking ahead, I'm pleased to be attending the Fairfax County Council of PTA's Emergency, excuse me, Emerging Minority Leaders Conference this Saturday in Springfield. I'll be meeting with the Student Advisory Council next Wednesday at Robinson, and I'll be visiting Falls Church on November 13th and Centerville High School on November 14th as the first two visits during my second-quarter tour. I'm very excited to be attending the Virginia School Boards Association's annual conference down in Williamsburg on November the 20th. They're holding a roundtable for student representatives from across the Commonwealth, so I'm looking forward to talking to them. And lastly, just an information note, if any member of the public or of the school board would like more information on my school visits or my schedule, please check out the Student Representative Matters newsletter, which I've been published, have been published online under Student Representative on the school board's website consistently since July. And I look forward to all the events I mentioned, and I thank you.
Mr. Latif, thank you for your active involvement. We appreciate it. Remember, it's your senior year, you still got to get through that, but you're doing a great job, so thank you so much. Next on our agenda is action items, and we will start with action item 4.01, the Fairfax County School Board Legislative Program, and I call on Mr. McElveen for a motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the school board adopt the 2015 Fairfax County School Board Legislative Program as detailed in the agenda item.
Is there a second? Ms. Hines, second? Would you like to speak on that now?
Sure.
All right.
I will speak on this briefly, because I do believe this is one of the most important things we do per, each year. It is perhaps the only place that you can find the school board's views on policymaking, on how we intend to advocate for our school system in one place, very concisely written. And as we have the past two years, this will be the third year, we have put together a priority position page as part of our program. This year is unique because that is an integral part of the program. It's actually on page four, for those of you following along. And why this is important is because we found that our legislators don't like to hear just bland statements of our feelings about policy. They want to know exactly what they can do to support us. And so this has been very helpful. Every year, we go through it with Michael Malloy to see what progress we've made, and I do strongly believe that these priority positions have helped us advocate better for our school system. And if you look at them, the most, the number-one priority, of course, is funding. And as we heard from our teacher organizations tonight, we, this is something that we can all agree on, is that our state is not providing adequate resources. And in fact, over the past five years, the statistic is something like they've cut from $300 to $600 million from, from education as our population has boomed, and that is completely unacceptable. I won't go through all of our priority positions, because I'm sure they will come out in the discussion tonight. But again, I am so proud to have our teacher organizations on the same page as us, so that they can join with Mr. Malloy in advocating for us in Richmond. With that, I will leave it up for discussion. Thank you.
Ms. Hines, would you like to speak on your second?
Yeah, just briefly. I just wanted to give a mention to Michael Malloy, our Director of Government Relations. You know, we have a habit, as you saw tonight, of waiting until people are leaving us to really do a good job of thanking people for all they do for us. And I just, I, you know, we may not, we definitely do not say it enough. It's an incredibly difficult job, and not only is it time-consuming, it requires this, this incredible mix of talents and skills that are about communication and getting along with people, and just also an encyclopedic knowledge of Virginia and how the Virginia General Assembly works. And it's obviously a very complex body, and I just, I'm so grateful to Michael for all the work that you do for us, that we're able to have this great product every year to, to bring to Richmond. And I also, I just want to echo, I'm always so glad that we're on the same team with our employee associations, and tonight we heard from FCFT and FEA. That is not always the case, you know, a school board and the employer organizations are not always on the same side, but we, we very much are. And one of the things that I count on them to help us with is to keep an eye on things like benefits and due process protections, because you never know when those things are going to suddenly be on the table down in Richmond. And we, we, we want the best for our employees, so we are with them all the way. Mr. McElveen mentioned funding, and you know, that probably sounds like something you hear every year, and oh, sure, they're talking about money again, but really, we are getting to the point where it's, it's pretty clear that the state of Virginia has been underfunding public education for several years and is just not meeting the standards of quality needs and just not funding the standards of quality right now. And that's the central message, I think, for those in the community who want to help us advocate in Richmond, that there is a problem of adequacy of funding in the state of Virginia. And, and I think that's a message we can give to all of our delegates and our state senators, even those who are, you know, big supporters of the school system. I know they're trying down there, but they need to hear that as well. So I look forward to the rest of our conversation.
All right. If no one else would like to speak to the main motion, we have an amendment. I call on Ms. McLaughlin.
I move to amend the main motion by adding the following language to the education funding-dash-federal position under the existing heading, quote, "The Fairfax County School Board Supports." Additional federal funding aid to mitigate the impact of providing necessary educational services for unaccompanied children who have been relocated to Fairfax County through the Federal Department of Health and Human Services Office of Refugee Settlement.
Second by Ms. Schultz. Ms. McLaughlin, you may speak. Oh, yes, you may speak.
Anyone who has been following the national conversation on what do we do about the border crisis recognizes that this has been impacting jurisdictions throughout the United States. But what many may not realize is even though Virginia doesn't sit along the United States-Mexican border, we are among the top six or seven states in the US that are being significantly impacted by unaccompanied minors who are being placed with guardians outside of where they have come across the border, because the, the US federal shelters simply cannot accommodate them any longer. So while these unaccompanied minors await adjudication through the federal court system about the legality of remaining here in the United States, this has placed a services challenge for the jurisdictions who are taking in these children. To be specific, Fairfax County is the second-largest school system for receiving unaccompanied minors. According to the federal government, there's over 1,000 students who've been placed in Fairfax County, unaccompanied minors. And when you look at the Commonwealth of Virginia, it's over 3,000 students. And so in talking with some of our local officials, including our board supervisors, I, what I've noticed is the request that our elected officials start to communicate with the federal government, that while it tries to determine what to do about its immigration policies and its border protection, the reality is that there has been a disproportionate impact of services and needs within certain states. And anyone who does a simple Google search will find that already Arizona, Texas, Delaware, North Carolina, to just name a few, those governors and their elected officials have already been speaking publicly about the importance of the federal government providing some sort of federal support, reimbursement, or assistance. And so it is with this that I put forward this amended language, simply because I think as the largest school system in the Commonwealth, and again, being one of the states that is being impacted at the highest level among our 50 states, that's important to communicate to our Virginia General Assembly elected officials that we would like their support and their voice as we communicate with the federal government about how do we, in the local jurisdictions, handle the demands that have come in such a short period of time. So I do hope that my colleagues will carefully consider the fact that the board supervisors met on October 21st and conveyed in their legislative committee, which consisted of all of them in the meeting that day, that they do believe it's important to communicate a request to the federal government for funding assistance. They have not finalized their package yet, but that has been conveyed to me through Supervisor Harry's office and his staff, that the request is there and that the support is there among the board supervisors. I think this is very important, that we demonstrate to Fairfax County taxpayers that we recognize that while we absolutely welcome and embrace each and every child who comes to our doors to educate them, we also need to be communicating with the federal government that this does have an impact. And I think that the language I have before you is very broad, it's very responsible, but it is important, again, that we lead and we be clear that what we're talking about in our legislative program is the issue of how do we address the, the financial impact of unaccompanied minors.
Thank you. Ms. Schultz, would you like to speak?
Sure. So at our previous school board meeting, just prior to, we had a forum, and that, that's a meeting that is a public meeting. It happens, it does happen off-camera, because it allows us to speak a little bit more collegially to one another as, as we sit in another room, anybody's welcome to. And those minutes and the audio are documented. And I had a forum topic requesting information specifically about the 1,131 children who have been identified by the federal government as being placed here by ORR. And we're in the middle of, as a board, being responded to by staff and with legal counsel on the information that we can seek. But if you conservatively estimate $15,000 a student, and some of these students do have come with particularly high needs, definitely extremely limited, if any, English and a number of other services, you're talking about $17 million just this year. And in a time where we're really tight on budget for the students that we already have, to have the federal government place 1,131 students here and provide no additional funds to support it and expect the Fairfax County taxpayers to just pick up the bill, I think is egregious. And I think the time has come, particularly in a jurisdiction our size, that just to expect that we'll just pick up the tab and not ask for the resources to support the children who come across the school transom is, is unreasonable. And so we, we don't have the ability to, to ask any questions. We do engage and welcome and educate every child who crosses that transom and comes into one of Fairfax County 196 schools and is counted amongst our 186,000 students, but we don't have the $17 million or potentially a lot more. And I think it's perfectly reasonable that if ORR sees fit to find placement, whether they are ultimately reunited with extended family members, or even their own parents, or they're placed in foster homes, or otherwise, the resources are still needed to meet these children's educational, social, emotional welfare needs, and they simply didn't come with that. And so I think it's incumbent upon us to be fiscally responsible for the school division and as one of the largest school divisions in the nation, to lead on this issue, to say you, you can't do one without the other. And asking us to educate fully and meet the needs of these children comes along with reasonably the resources to make that happen.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz. Would anybody else like to speak? Ms. Strauss.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I move to amend the amendment in the form of a substitute motion by adding the following language to the education funding federal position under the existing heading, "The Fairfax County School Board Supports Additional Federal Funding for K-12 Limited English Proficiency or LEP Services."
Is there a second? Mr. Moon. Ms. Strauss.
Thank you. There are many areas in which we deal with unfunded mandates, and our speakers tonight talked about some of them. We are a culturally diverse community, and as being part of the national capital area, we'll probably always be a culturally diverse community, and it is part of our strength. Young people who are there because their families are here, or their sponsors are here, if they are residents of the county, then those students have a right to be in our public schools. That is settled law. And it is important that we provide the services that are needed. And it is important that we provide the services that are needed. And within a school setting, the services that are most often needed are English as a second, English for speakers of other languages or ESOL services. Anytime that there are difficulties in the world, it may be, for example, after Vietnam, we had many families and children coming to us from Vietnam. It may be from India, China, Pakistan. It may be from the Middle East. It may be from Central America, South America. It may be from South Sudan. But we receive children and families who are looking for a better life and are waiting for status and all of that, and they are ours to educate while they are residents in this county. In terms of unfunded mandates, our provision of ESOL services are one of them. Our ESOL services this year project to cost about $80 million. We receive about $12.8 million in state and federal funding. We need to be able to receive more. Other examples of unfunded mandates, IDEA, if the feds were actually going to fund us the 40% of the additional cost of students with disabilities, we would get an additional $71.6 million. Another unfunded mandate is IMPACT Aid, which, by the way, many of our youngsters and families are sending in their forms as of tomorrow. IMPACT Aid is additional funding that we are supposed to receive to offset the fact that we have many students whose parents are working at federal facilities. Very often, people in the armed services who are performing important activities on part of all of us, we really do another $19 million in IMPACT Aid. So our ESOL services are really another part of helping to educate the children who are here with us to the highest level possible and to acknowledge what it costs us in order to educate our children well. So I think that it is most appropriate, if we are concerned about providing services to our proudly diverse community, that I believe our funding source and our formula is really our ESOL formula. And I think that that gives us the appropriate pathway to ask for additional funding and to acknowledge that as part of the national capital area, we will probably always be divorced. And this is a good thing for all of us, but we need some help in funding. We are short of funding. So I would propose that the wording in my amendment is perhaps the best vehicle for asking for additional funding to help us meet the needs of our proudly diverse community. Thank you.
Mr. Moon, would you like to speak to your second?
Just briefly, Madam Chair. As a second language learner, who was in ESL program about 40 years ago, I know how beneficial ESL program is for those who come to this country without language background, or even those students who might have been born in the U.S. but in very early age, growing up in the families where English is not the primary language, and that even without this federal mandate to teach, provide English language program to second language learners, that Fairfax County School System would be providing those valuable services to our students. However, when this is a federal mandate, I think federal government should do, you know, do its own responsibility by properly funding us. When they are only funding us about 15% of what it's costing us, that it is not doing its job, that we should be asking for more funding.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. Ms. Hines.
Thank you. So as I understand it, what we're talking about now, debating and will be voting on, is the amendment to the amendment, right? Okay.
It's a substitute, so it really subsumes the First Amendment. So right now, this is what's on the table.
Okay, great, all right. Well, I wanted to start by just thanking Ms. McLaughlin and Mrs. Strauss for bringing this to our attention and letting us have this conversation about this. When I first saw Ms. McLaughlin's amendment, I thought, yeah, you know, we need to ask for support for these students. We really do. I think Mrs. Strauss has brought along what might be, you know, I'm going to listen to my colleagues and see, but I think it might be a more effective way to do it. You know, those extra 1,000-plus children who came to us through the recent wave of unaccompanied children, you know, that gave us an opportunity to embrace over 1,000 more children into our global school system. But it also gives us an opportunity now to talk about the fact that we are woefully underfunded by the federal government when it comes to meeting the needs of our English as a second language population. So to me, you know, this is a moment for us to talk about this, and I'm glad we are. The question is just how best to advocate for our recent immigrants. And I think Ms. Strauss mentioned that the need is really for English as a second language instruction funding. I mean, that's really what all of our many recent immigrants, students, need. And what I worry about with the particular, the language that's related to the students who are here via the Office of Refugee Resettlement is that we can't really track those children, as I understand it, because we can't ask, we're not allowed to ask where children are coming from or what their status is, why they're here. And so I worry a little bit about tying any kind of request for funding to that. We also don't know what's going to happen with those children. They're in a little bit of limbo because it depends on what the Office of Refugee Resettlement does with them. So I just, if, you know, if the federal government said, yes, we're sending 1,100 children to you through the ORR, and this is how much money is attached to each child, and we could just say, give us that money, that'd be great, but that's obviously too simple. It doesn't happen that way, apparently. The money does not follow those children. It's complicated. And really, when you come down to it, those 1,000 or so children are a small percentage of our ESOL population and of our ESOL needs. You know, but we do know how many children we have, and we know that our federal funding for ESOL instruction is woefully inadequate. So this as an opportunity to just kind of knock on the federal government's door, you know, one more time, say, you know, here, you know, we're doing our job here educating these children. You require us to do a good job, and you should, but there are a lot of unfunded mandates in this business. And so I'm leaning towards supporting the general statement that Ms. Strauss has suggested, which is to request greater funding for ESOL instruction. And I do thank you both for bringing this forward.
Thanks, Ms. McLaughlin.
I wanted to share my concerns about the generic language of the substitute motion. I actually support the macro-level statement here. I mean, if, as a school system, we are not getting adequate funding for ESOL services, for IMPACT Aid, for military families who are placed here by the federal government, for special education services that I've been told we're also not getting reimbursed appropriately, those are all very important things that we absolutely should have as part of our legislative package and communicate that. But that's why I don't support the substitute motion as being that word, substitute. It's not a substitute for my amendment. My amendment is trying to support the leadership of our county board of supervisors and the leadership that we are hearing in jurisdictions throughout the United States that are being impacted by an immigration issue. Keep in mind that the reason the Office of Refugee Resettlement has sent over 1,000 students to Fairfax County is because our court system is backlogged, our shelters at the border are overcrowded, they could no longer house and provide for those minors who are unaccompanied and whose legal status in the United States is right now undetermined. And so this is very different. I think it's very important that it be clearly understood, we are not talking about a question of embracing diversity. I have every faith that all 12 of us here at this board table embrace and value our diverse families that are here in Fairfax County, that we absolutely believe each and every child's needs, including services for English speakers of other languages. It's all important, but that's not what my amendment is, and I don't believe that the substitute motion captures that. I think it is separate and distinct. And I think that we miss an opportunity when this board says it wants to clearly communicate to the General Assembly and to the federal government what our needs are, to miss this opportunity to acknowledge that the unaccompanied minors has impacted and will impact Fairfax County public schools. I think we miss our opportunity to lead on an issue, and as one of the second-largest school system being impacted by it, again, I ask my colleagues to consider this substitute motion. How does this clearly communicate our needs and how do we lead with the substitute motion? I don't believe it accomplishes that, so I won't be supporting it.
Mr. Stark.
Ms. Strauss, could you help me understand why you introduced this as a substitute motion versus a separate amendment to the legislative package? I'm not sure if I understand.
I guess I will ask, Madam Chairman, may I respond to that?
I guess I should ask the chairman.
Yes, you may, Ms. Strauss.
Thank you. When we are asking for a change in funding, particularly unfunded mandates, I think it's also important that we take the long view. We will receive many more children over time for whom ESOL services are important. Unaccompanied children who arrive here are generally coming to be reunited with families and sponsors. They are not homeless on the street. And I believe that this being specific on the services that are required, is the ESOL Trying to approach this through a statement dealing with a current border issue, it's very difficult to tie a funding need to that. We acknowledge that we need more funding to serve our children who require ESOL services. We cannot ask the citizenship status of children. Children have a right to be in our schools based on residency, and the residency is determined by the adults with whom they are living, their families, their sponsors. Our funding for schools are based on real estate taxes, sales taxes, et cetera, and then we need to be able to provide additional services. I think in the long term, the reality of asking for funding specifically for the services that are driven by the needs of the children, not necessarily by a current, much-publicized immigrant issue, I think that we are, that this gives us the opportunity to take the longer view, recognizing the specific needs of these children, trying to tie a request for additional funding to a situation for which we don't know where these children are, we don't know even if they are in Fairfax County public schools, and we don't know their status. Consequently, how would we know what funding to assign? We don't know what services specifically are important for those children. But whereas asking for additional funding for ESOL services, it is unfunded now, we know that, and we are under pressure. And I think that this more clearly ties the funding to the specific needs of the children rather than to an immigrant status.
Yeah. Ms. Strauss, my, the core question I was trying to get at, because this is the part that I'm not, I don't understand, I guess, is there's really two distinct amendments here, and neither one of them are necessarily anti the other. I mean, they both have complementary benefits to them. One clearly has, the one really potentially funds a much greater portion of the cost of a student being here, which is the actual cost of attendance. And yours would ask that the government fund the ESOL portion, which is one aspect of their attendance. And both of them are impacts on Fairfax County taxpayers. They both have a significant impact on Fairfax County taxpayers. So I guess I was trying to understand if there was some particular reason why you, that you believed it was more important to have it as a substitute amendment versus having it as a separate amendment, which, both of which could potentially be in our legislative package. And I understand your advocacy, and I value your advocacy because I think it has, it's one that we recognize is, needs federal government attention and support. But I just was trying to understand better. And I have to admit, I'm torn because I think they're both useful and valuable, and I'm not sure how I'm going to vote because I think they both have a place in our legislative package. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Ms. Evans.
Yes, thank you. And Mr. Stark, you teed that up nicely because what I was going to say is I would happily support Mrs. Strauss's amendment as a separate amendment. I think they are two separate things, and I am happy to support both of them, but not as a substitute for Ms. McLaughlin's amendment. We do need more ESOL funding. We absolutely need more ESOL funding, particularly as our county gets more and more diverse with needier and needier ESOL students as well. But this situation is not the same situation that we've been in before. What Ms. McLaughlin's amendment speaks to is a situation that we know about now. We, you know, as we've said, we take every child who comes to our door, and we welcome them, and we love them, and we educate them. That's not an issue here at all. We do it not just because we must legally, although we must legally, but we do it because it's the right thing to do. But that doesn't have anything to do with this amendment, which has to do with funding. The U.S. government is placing children here. They have put a number on the number of children that they have placed here. It's 1,131 to date, or at least that's the last number we've received. It may be higher now. It is irrelevant to ask about legal status. It's completely irrelevant. Some may be here illegally, some may be here illegally. That's irrelevant. It's also irrelevant that we don't have a method of tracking them. What we do know is that the United States government has told us they have placed them there, and that's really all we need to know. They have placed children here, and they will continue to place children here, and we need help. We need help with the children that the United States government has placed in our care. You know, we're happy to educate them and care for them, but because the United States government has placed them here, we are asking for a very specific thing. And I think it would be, when we go to the federal government, we need to tell them what we're talking about. We're not just talking about, yes, we want more ESOL funding, but we very specifically need help with this influx of students that they have placed with us. So I won't be supporting Mrs. Strauss's amendment as a substitute, but I would be more than happy to support it if it fails as a substitute. I'd be more than happy to support it as an additional amendment. But I very strongly support Ms. McLaughlin's amendment. I thank her for raising it and for bringing it to us, and I think it's very necessary.
Thank you. Next, Ms. Schultz.
So getting back to the core issue of why this amendment was originally offered, there are two entirely separate intents here. So one intent is to address limited English proficiency students. And if you want to ask for federal funds for limited English proficiency students, for whatever reason, you're welcome to go ahead and ask for that. However, that is, it's almost a non sequitur to the original amendment, which was to specifically address the federally instituted burden that Fairfax did not plan for, this board did not budget for, the board of supervisors did not plan for, and the state did not fund. So we don't have the money from the state, we don't have the money from the board of supervisors, and we don't have our own money. So the issue is, at $17 million, and that's a conservative estimate, it's far from just LEP services. You know, as an example, we have restricted requirements now on paths to a diploma. And some of these undocumented students can be 16, 17, 18 years old and have no English capability whatsoever, and we don't get a waiver on graduating these students on time. You know, they could be sitting in a ninth-grade biology class and struggling to meet the exact same diploma requirements as the child in the chair next to them that's been in Fairfax County public schools since kindergarten. So it is about the breadth of services that students who appear on our doorstep through no potential, I mean, and whatever, and I'm the biggest, you know, advocate for new methods for projections so that we get our numbers right. You know, if you had a crystal ball and a magic wand, you couldn't have come up with, you know, we'll have 1,131 more students in Fairfax County. up with, you know, we'll have 1,131 more students in Fairfax County this year, six or eight months ago. So the, the nature of this amendment is an interesting concept. It's one we have not discussed at all, while the, the original amendment that it's intending to supplant, we have discussed, we have received information about. So, I mean, I, I welcome a forum topic about, you know, LEP students and why we might need additional funds and where those additional funds might come from, but it, it doesn't relate to the motion that's on the table. And so I think that we've got to go back to the original intent of what the discussion is and what this board has discussed in the matter before us, which is, how do we fund another 1,100-plus students in Fairfax County?
Next is Ms. Reed.
Thank you. This is a very good discussion. And I think we're kind of getting someplace now by talking things through. I don't think we need to focus on any of the legal issues, so I'd like to just throw them aside for now. And I think what we're talking about are needs and are the needs of our students being met. And I believe that we have two distinct amendments that, as some have alluded to, address different types of needs. And I'm going to provide two very quick vignettes from two of my schools, and I bet you all could, could probably do the same thing. One of my high schools placed two teenagers from Central America. They spoke no English, they had been to no school in over eight years. So they had many social, emotional challenges. And then I have an elementary school that has so many English-as-a-second-language students that all staff work in small student groups, all staff, the principal, everybody. So that, that tells you, I think, just two different scenarios, both of which are saying, we need help, we have these challenges, and we're just not getting the funding. So the Board of Supervisors has acknowledged the issue here regarding the unaccompanied minors. We have a report that we've all just received. They're worried about it, too, because it's, it doesn't just provide a drain on our services as an educational body, but also all the social services as well on the county side. So I feel that at a very minimum, we need to be placing both of these issues on our legislative agenda. I think that the first one, if nothing else, we need to be raising awareness. And this is one way to do it, but I feel we should be thought leaders and be raising this issue in many venues and in many ways. But I view it, again, as two separate issues. I, I would support a motion if we were to do such a thing, to offer two distinct amendments, because then I would be inclined to vote for both of them.
Ms. Smith.
Thank you. I am going to support Mrs. Strauss's substitute amendment for a number of reasons. And I, I think that she really tried to analyze this and, and really look at what our major needs are and the best way for us to get funding, looking at it big picture. And, you know, it is a difficult problem, but it's also difficult from the viewpoint of our ability to ask questions about who students are and to get funding for them. So, you know, we do have the, the memo that the county executive prepared for the Board of Supervisors. And, you know, the information in the letter talks about 1,131 unaccompanied children with sponsors in Fairfax County. It doesn't mean they're our students. They could be in private schools, they could be in parochial schools, and, and we can't count, we can't ask those children, are you legal or not? The greater issue we have is we have kids coming here for lots of reasons with those needs, and that is a continuing problem. So to me, Mrs. Strauss's substitute amendment steps back from the issue to the bigger need we have and doesn't tie it down to one specific issue. And it does make it difficult when we can't ask about whether the students are legal or not. I have another point. This is what happens when you come in on the red eye. Okay, I'm going to stop there. Those are my main reasons for supporting her amendment.
Thank you. No worries. Mr. Velkoff.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There are all kinds of threads going on here that I'm trying to keep track of. I think something I've learned really through the discussion is, one major distinction between these two is that, as I understand it, the main motion, the main, the First Amendment is really asking for the total cost per child. I heard that as total cost per child. Okay, that's how I heard it from comments from Ms. Schultz, and maybe I misunderstood, because I don't think it's, to me, it wasn't really clear, because we talked about $17 million. I thought it was taking a certain number of students, the 1,000-whatever from the Office of Resettlement, and then multiplying it by a cost per student. So, right, it says mitigate the impact, and it's...
I'm sorry, Mr. Velkoff, just to clarify, that, those are my back-of-the-envelope estimates from the forum. That's not a part of this, and that was merely, just to answer your question, that was my calculation on the additional burden. That's all.
So if I, if I were to go to a conversation, then I'll, I'll keep speaking here.
All right. If you ask questions, ask through me. That way I can keep the order better.
I apologize, Madam Chair. You are correct. So I think if, if I were in Mr. Malloy's position, or if I were in the office of one of our congressmen or senators, I'm, I'm not sure what the board is authoring me to be asking for here in terms of, you know, how much, is it the marginal cost, in which case what Mrs. Sch, Mrs. Strauss is advocating actually sort of gets to that marginal cost, because it's largely ESOL? Or are we talking about the total cost of a student? So I'm, I guess I'm less clear on that now than I thought I had been. I think we're all in agreement that the goal here is to get increased funding from the federal government. And I'm partly asking, and Mr. Malloy, please forgive me if I'm putting you on the spot here, I, I think our legislative program does, I mean, I, I believe it is already addressing the questions that Mrs. Strauss raised. So, Madam Chair, could we ask Mr. Malloy to comment on whether, if this did not pass, if either of these did not pass, would our legislative program convey the intent to ask for more federal funds as it is?
Mr. Malloy, could you please comment?
Absolutely, Madam Chair. The legislative program, actually, the school board has had very longstanding positions on federal funding, one of which is through additional funding through Title III, which is the, the federal title that deals with, with English language learners. So there already is language in the program that deals with the broad topic of English language learners, both from a state perspective as well as a federal perspective.
Thank you. So I guess what I'm trying to come away with, I think that Mrs. Strauss's version of this, I think, is grounded in, and I'll put it in my words, there's a fear that the main motion is injecting ourselves into issues of immigration policy, which are quite controversial. And I, I think that's one of the motivations that I see for wanting to offer this as a substitute. On the other hand, I think the, the motion that Ms. McLaughlin is bringing forward is, the, the way I look at it is, it's saying, well, the recent events, right, have given us a way of quantifying this impact, right? Because the, the Office of Refugee Resettlement is publishing this number, so rather than, rather than just trying to find some kind of statistical guess about this impact, we have, we're going to use this number as the way of calculating that. So I, I appreciate you all listening to me think out loud here. I'm, I'm quite confused. And I, I look forward to anything else you can do to educate me here.
Thank you, Mr. Velkoff, for those candid, honest comments. I am as well, a little bit. I have a first go back, and that will be Ms. McLaughlin.
So I very much appreciated Mr. Velkoff thinking out loud, and I appreciated that he asked a very important question of our lobbyist, Mr. Malloy. Because what he clarified is that this substitute motion, the ask is already there. It is part of our program package. We already make very clear as a school system that it is very important that at the state and federal level, Title III funding to address English as a, English languages, English, English, yes, ESOL services, that that language exists. We, we already have placed that in our package. And as Mr. McAlveen, who put forward the main motion, stated, what is our job here? But to demonstrate to our elected officials, what can they do to support us and what are our priority positions? So if we've already included in the package as it's written right now, that we think it's very important that any and all necessary funding for services for English-as-a-second-language learners, then I would, again, say to my colleagues, why do, why would this substitute motion accomplish what the original amendment is? Because we actually already make this statement. It's already in there. But I think it's, Dr. Garza, what I wanted to ask you, if you might be able to comment or someone on your staff, is, Ms. Strauss is saying that currently, the federal government does not reimburse us 100% for the Title III funding that we are owed for those students where they are limited English proficiency and need services. If you could comment on to what degree that statement is? I mean, are we looking at, we only get 25% each year of what we need? Are we getting 90% of what we need? But I'm trying to understand from Ms. Strauss's motion, in, in my mind, it's bringing up a much bigger issue, which is to say, is it true or not that the, that we're not getting the funding we needed? And then to the point that Ms. Evans, Ms. Reed, and many others have said, if this board decides, we want to make an emphasis on both areas. Our funding for Title III services has been grossly underfunded, and we want to make that a priority. And we also want to speak to the fact that we are a state and we are a school system that is being dramatically impacted by the unaccompanied minor issue affecting the, the federal government.
Ms. McLaughlin, your question, just be concise, so I'm sure what Dr. Garza, are you okay? You got it?
I think the question was, is, is it true that we're underfunded with regard to ESOL services or other federal programming, and to what extent? I don't have the exact number, but I can tell you, it's well below 20% of the real cost. And that also applies not only to Title III, which is our ESOL programming. It also applies to IDEA, which are, is our federally mandated special education services. It's sorely underfunded. And I invite Michael to correct me, would you, or Kristin Michael here, too, but would you say about less than 20% of the real cost are funded by federal programming in those two areas?
No, thank you for asking. When we look at IDEA, the federal government in 1975 made a commitment to fund 40% of that cost, but today they're only providing FCPS with 11.5% of that cost. And that shortfall for 2015 is in excess of $71 million. So that's just IDEA as an example.
Always can rely, I mean, isn't that perfect? Thank you. You were ready.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
So Chairman Kofax?
Yes, ma'am.
What I'm trying to understand, then, is with, with respect to this substitute motion, if what Dr. Garza and Mr. Malloy have told us, which is, we are underfunded, and we already have it in our legislative package, saying, we believe we should be fully funded in these areas, and we're not, then, you know, then, Dr. Garza, how would this substitute motion change what we're already doing?
Who would like to speak to that? Michael?
Mr. Malloy?
Yeah, I, I actually can speak to that. To be quite frank, I'm not certain that the additional language of the substitute would change any existing position that the board has already taken. It's, you've already, in, not only in the education funding position, but also on the position that you have on English language learners. Both talk about the necessity for additional resources for our English language learners. So you, you've already covered it in at least two places in the program. So this, I think this will be a reinforcement of that position, but I don't think it would add necessarily any, anything directly different.
Thank you. So with that, again, I would ask my colleagues, as you consider voting on the substitute motion, you consider how this actually strengthens and enhances our legislative package by overriding my original amendment? Because I do believe we have a responsibility to specifically speak to and address the needs of our, of our schools and our county with respect to unaccompanied minors.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin, for asking those clarifying questions. I found those helpful. Mr. Moon, we are in go-backs, we have three, three go-backs, and then we will vote on the substitute.
Just briefly, Madam Chair. If what you are seeking is additional funding, now the question comes down to, what is the best way to get there? You know, for me, that the issue of unaccompanied minor is very politically charged. That is how it is seen by many members in the immigrant community, and I, as an immigrant, can tell you that. And that sends a very unwelcoming message to many members in the community, and that's one of the reasons I will not be able to, if Mrs. Strauss's motion fails, I will not be able to support the Ms. McLaughlin's motion. We can all work together to get more funding from, whether it's Richmond or Washington, D.C., but we'll need to have everyone in the, in, in the county to be on board, rather than, rather than making many members in the community fear being attacked.
Ms. Smith.
Thank you. I was looking, this is what I forgot to say earlier, so, looking at the memo from the county executive, and he has conclusions and recommendations, and of course, we don't know what the Board of Supervisors will be. But his recommendation about funding related to schools states that it is recommended that the county pursue an adjustment in the state educational funding formula to help, help offset additional service needs associated with a culturally, can't talk, I'm sorry, culturally diverse county. It's not related to specific students under a certain situation. And, you know, I understand in our legislative pack, it, it already says continued and adequate funding for teacher quality, which gets into the Title III, but Mrs. Strauss is asking for additional federal funding. It's just a different word, maybe we could add it somewhere else, but I am going to continue to support Mrs. Strauss in her substitute.
Ms. Strauss.
I'm going to return to what Mr. Moon had just stated. We have just come through a midterm election season in which we saw lots of ads on one side or another, and a lot of political discussion, and the whole issue of the border between Texas and Mexico, there's been a lot of discussion with that, and a lot of innuendos. And I, nobody here shares any of that. I believe that we all are here for children. But I believe that there is a way to address the unmet need for children without getting into the issue of the immigration, even though I know that that is not anybody's intent. I truly understand that. But I think that in the kind of politically-charged atmosphere that we are in, and I know, our unanimous desire to help all of our children and to be welcomed... and I know, our unanimous desire to help all of our children and to be welcoming and to celebrate our diversity, that acknowledging our need for more services for children for whom English is not their first language, I do believe that the better unifying way to ask for additional funding to the federal government is to not come through the issue of the whole immigration issue. I also think it gives us the longer view because we will continue to have children who are coming seeking refugee status, who are escaping from this, that, or the other thing. Also, in Mr. Long's memo, he indicates that in fact, the children who have come here have been placed in safe settings with sponsors, usually family members. And yes, they are awaiting decisions as to what's going to happen with ICE. But our concern is if these children qualify for staying with their family members, then it's a very different kind of a funding situation. And we may still need ESOL services for those children regardless of what the courts decide in immigration. I would much rather resolve this without getting into what we know we've watched on TV is, is a difficult and bitter discussion about immigration. So it is why I have offered this. I think it is a way to, I think, be more gracious in how we advocate for the education of the children. The better we educate the children of the world, the better the world is, regardless of where they come from.
Ms. Evans?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I strongly feel that this amendment, Ms. McLaughlin's amendment, is not in the least unwelcoming. I don't see any language in here that is controversial or unwelcoming. It says, we, we are welcoming these children and we need help in welcoming them. And we need help from the entity that is, is placing them here. As I said in my earlier remarks, we do welcome all children. We always have and we always will. So that's not an issue here. That's simply not an issue. I believe other jurisdictions have already gone ahead of us to ask the federal government for help, particularly those that had the, the largest numbers coming to them. And ultimately, if we don't ask, we won't get a yes.
Ms. Hines, and then Ms. Schultz.
Yeah, just briefly. You know, I'm glad that we're bringing up sort of the underlying issue here, and I didn't when I spoke about it at first. But this is what worries me ultimately as we're talking about this. By, by singling out these particular children, are we being unnecessarily divisive? Are we saying that or suggesting that these children who've come to us most recently are an extra specific untenable burden for us? And that's what I worry about, that we're kind of singling them out. All recent arrivals in our school system need the same kind of support. There's nothing different here. And I, I, I understand the concern that Mrs. Strauss's substitute really is just kind of belt and suspenders on what we've already got. But I, I'm thinking that I prefer that just because of the charged atmosphere around this particular conversation. We can ask for the same kind of help without running the risk of stigmatizing those children. And I know we're coming at this from different assumptions, you know, and I understand that. I think we all, our hearts are all in the right place. But I also worry about that, that we might stigmatize these particular children and step into a conversation that we don't have to, so.
Ms. Schultz?
I think the only people that are stigmatizing anything are the people who are sitting here at the table, and that's what's unfortunate. The children were delivered to us unexpected, unplanned, not projected. We don't have the facilities. We don't have the teachers. We don't have the buses. We don't have the desks. We don't have the chairs. We don't have the textbooks. We don't have the computers. We don't have the SBIT technology supports for them. We don't have, this increases our digital divide. There are fundamental resources that exist within a pipeline of a school system that were fundamentally upended by an unexpected delivery of 1,131 students. I agree that they might not all be students. That's exactly why I asked the questions that I asked in the previous forum. And it's unfortunate that the schedule of our calendar put the legislative program before us receiving the rest of the information. Nonetheless, there are no specifics in terms of the actual dollars that are asked by this amendment. But what it does contemplate is saying, ORR, federal government, you saw fit to pick Fairfax County to place 1,131 students, some portion of which, probably a large portion of which, probably a very, very large majority of which are student age because they're unaccompanied minors. So they're not going to be unaccompanied minors and be placed here if they're not school age. And they're not going to be one or two years old because they wouldn't be unaccompanied if they were one or two years old. So you can pretty much guarantee they lie somewhere in between preschool age, more likely elementary age, even more likely if they're unaccompanied beyond elementary, which puts them into some of the descriptions that some of my colleagues have shared this evening. And the reality is, this is not about attacking anybody. This is about identifying a very specific need which came up not of any economic development that's existed, not with any planned work with the board of supervisors, not with any infrastructure. There are no proffers here. I mean, we fight about the proffers that come over a single development or a commercial real estate contemplation, and yet there's no proffer here. And I think what this says is, federal government, if you're going to see fit without discussing it with any of us, and ORR knows where these students are. I mean, we say we don't know, and that's true. We don't know where these unaccompanied minors are. The question of their legality isn't the issue. The question is that we have to educate them regardless. We aren't given the, the parameters to say, you only educate US citizens. You educate who comes across the door. But we have mechanisms in local government and the state government to account for the students that are in the pipeline. We have projections. We build facilities. We buy buses. We, we plan textbook orders, all based on these pipelines. It doesn't account for or attribute the fact that the federal government will decide to place 1,100 students of student age reasonably and prudently. We can suspect that they are within the, the range of a K through 12 program or beyond because they could be 19, 20, 21 years old and attending your base school. You can have a 21-year-old sitting in class with, with a 10th grader. We still need funding for them and we still need to meet the graduation requirements. And when, when Ms. Michael gives us, you know, a stunning statistic, like $71 million in IDEA funds that are not received, and you look at a student population where 14% of our, our student population have, are students with disabilities, you know, I mean, those are some significant contemplations. A 16-year-old who shows up here who's dyslexic and doesn't speak English and hasn't been in school in eight years is going to need a little bit more than some additional English language assistance. And so I think it's reasonable and prudent to the taxpayers and the residents of Fairfax County that we, as the governing body, say, you can do this and we will educate them, but you need to provide the support to us, federal government, that comes along with your decision to place the students here. And it is reasonable for them to help us with that funding. And I think the only way we can do that is more broadly discuss it in the contemplated amendment as opposed to the substitute amendment.
All right. Thank you all for this robust discussion. We are now going to take a vote. All of those in favor of the substitute motion to add the following language to the education funding federal position under the existing heading, "The Fairfax County School Board Supports Additional Federal Funding for K through 12 Limited English Proficiency Services." All of those in favor? All of those in favor are Mr. Moon, Mr. McElveen, Ms. Hines, Ms. Smith, Ms. Strauss. Opposed? Ms. Reed, Ms. Darinette Kofax, Mr. Velkoff, Ms., Mr. Stork, I'm sorry, what? And Ms., did I say, did I say you? Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Evans, and Ms. Schultz. The substitute motion fails. So we will now vote on amending the main motion by adding the following language to the education funding federal position under the existing heading, "The Fairfax County School System," you, eight people want discussion? Okay, let me just read it so we know what we're discussing. "Additional federal funding to aid to mitigate the impact of providing necessary educational services for unaccompanied children who have been relocated to Fairfax through the Federal Department of Health and Human Services Office of Refugee Resettlement." And the, and people would like more discussion? And who's first, Mr. Velkoff?
I saw Mr. McElveen.
Mr. McElveen.
So now that we have rejected the, the more, the less divisive of these two options, I do have to speak to this. And I was trying to stay out of it because I like to impartially advocate for our legislative program. But something that Mr. Moon said really did stick with me. And what's lacking here is empathy in this language, and it concerns me very greatly. Look at this language. Mitigate the impact. You mitigate the impact of things like landslides, flooding, climate change, hurricanes, disease. You do not mitigate the impact of incoming children. It is offensive to our children in our system. And I hope we will heed the words of Mr. Moon, who says that we have to be empathetic with our populations here. And I'm afraid this language does not do this, so I cannot support it.
Can you pass to Ms. McLaughlin?
All right. Ms. McLaughlin, and we'll come back to Mr. Velkoff.
I guess the first thing I want to say for certainly my colleagues and for anyone who's watching this discussion, that I took great care in developing this language. And I didn't develop it in a vacuum by myself. I spoke to my colleagues during a work session about this issue, that it's a part of the national conversation. And that because we are one of the states that's being impacted the greatest, do we have a responsibility to have a voice in this discussion and to communicate the impact it's had on us? I then worked with our lobbyist, Mr. Malloy, on the language. So whether mitigate was there and the castigation that's coming now, it didn't come from me. I asked for, for professional staff to help me with the wording. I then gave the draft language to Mr. McElveen because he represents the board on our work with the General Assembly. And Mr. McElveen has seen this language. He said, it looks good. At no point did Mr. McElveen email me and say, I'm concerned the language might be too severe. I'm concerned that it might offend. Because for anyone who knows me as a social worker and who cares about kids and is a former ESOL volunteer, I believe, not only myself, but all 12 of us, want to be incredibly empathetic and sensitive. So if there's language in this that suddenly now seems to be offensive, then I think that is what's great about tonight's conversation. But I am worried about the tone that I'm hearing now. It's disappointing because it really feels very targeted, quite frankly, toward myself who drafted this. This is not about being insensitive or, or unempathetic. And I, I really know that the, what's important here is all 12 of us are trying to do the best we can to represent our entire community. And this notion and the language that I'm now hearing, it's, it's curious to me if my colleagues would say this all to the board supervisors too. Do you consider them divisive? Do you consider them insensitive? I, I, I'm really disappointed that this is where the tenor of our conversation was going. This was just simply to say, we have a responsibility to be part of a national conversation about a decision that the federal government had to say, we can't shelter these people where they've been, you know, caught at the border. And so now we're going beyond our normal means of adjudicating unaccompanied minors and they're being dispersed throughout the country. And for elected officials to not have a thoughtful and honest conversation with one another, and we have responsibility to communicate with our state and our federal officials, that's all this language was. But I, I'm really quite shocked that, that anyone has tried to make this language about suddenly being divisive and insulting and insensitive. And I really hope this board moves beyond trying to mischaracterize any of us.
Mr. Velkoff?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think this, this motion suffers from the same defect that the substitute did, which was that I think it's actually unnecessary, as we heard from Mr. Malloy and then got some fascinating clarification from Ms. Michael. So the only thing that is added here is, I think, there's an attempt to say something about immigration policy. And I don't, I don't think that this is doing a very good job of having our board come together and make some kind of statement about immigration. So although I totally believe that we should be asking for the federal government for assistance here, I don't think this is the way to do it. And I think as it stands, there's enough in our program as it is. So I won't be supporting this.
Ms. Hines?
Thank you. Yeah, this is a minefield, as you can tell, you know? And I think, I really do think, I understand where this is coming from. I understand where Mr. McElveen is coming from. You know, there is a lot in here that's kind of hard to deal with, right? We have, we have, we do have an unfortunate conversation in this country right now about immigration. And it is politically charged, and we're kind of stepping into it. And I think we have to just accept that, that this is going to be a little bit difficult. As your, as the board's federal policy liaison this year, I wanted to ask maybe the maker of the motion or Mr. Malloy, and I am totally putting you on the spot here, so say no if you can't do it. How do I advocate for this as our federal policy liaison? I mean, I am, I am seriously concerned about it. Go, go ahead. What?
I refer the question to the chair.
Oh, I'm referring the, okay, but to Mr. Malloy?
Sure.
Okay, can I do that?
Yes.
Okay, can I finish my question?
Yes, please finish your question and we will ask Mr. Malloy to respond.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm looking at this and really wondering, how do we know, how will I know when I arrive, how many children we're talking about? And what am I asking the federal government to do with the children who have been, am I asking the children who have been put here this year by the ORR? Am I asking sort of going forward whenever children are assigned, put here in Fairfax County under the ORR? Am I making assumptions about what percentage of them are in Fairfax County? Do I have an understanding of what I'm asking for here?
In general, when we put together legislative language, legislative language is primarily intended to be broad, to allow for some interpretation. So this language was drafted with that in mind, that there, that, and clearly, based on your conversation here, there's a lot of interpretation that goes into this, this discussion. But there's interpretation that goes into any discussion when you deal with, you know, individual services, when you deal with, when you deal with students, when you deal with federal funding, with state funding. I would say, in terms of the mechanism, it probably would be something as straightforward as a letter from the board or a letter from, from the superintendent. That would be a policy decision that would be made, talking about this issue. We do have, in terms of data, and I was actually just looking, the number now is 1,177. It's been updated as of September 30th. So there is a running tally from the, the Office of Relocation Refugee Services that in terms of the numbers of students that are coming, not just, and it's not just to Fairfax, it's to counties throughout the United States. So there is at least that number that you can talk about. And then again, as I said, the, the remainder of it would be a policy decision. It could be a policy decision that's focused entirely It could be a policy decision that's focused entirely on additional services that we would, that we would assume that these students would require. It could be an assumption that it would be funding for the entire, and, and I would caution, in terms of numbers, you know, recall that pretty much anything that we talk about in terms of funding, there is a local share, there is a state share, and there's a federal share. So for any service that we're talking about, whether it be language learners, or special education students, or even general education student, there is going to be that split between local, state, and federal. So we're, you know, this, I think, we contemplate trying to address that local, address the local issue more primarily.
Okay, thank you. Have a follow-up, Mr. Derinat Kofax? Is that okay?
Yes.
Thank you. So then, in your opinion, Mr. Malloy, just, just like the question we asked of Ms. Strauss's amendment, does this amendment add anything to our current advocacy statement about funding for Title III? Are we adding anything here?
It's difficult when you ask for a, an interpretation. I would say that you are, you would be adding another category, essentially. You know, I was thinking, as I was looking through, we do talk about, you know, federally-connected students, so students are here as a, as a, you know, as a byproduct of their parent having a job here, or may be on a military base. We talk about special education students. We talk about English language learners. We talk about multiple categories of students, really without, you know, without any judgment one way or the other. It's just that, you know, those are, those are words that you use in the policy arena. I would say that there's probably a coincidence between ESOL services, because when you look at the countries from which these students are coming to the United States, primarily Central and Latin America, probably not, and, and again, this, this is an assumption. This is not, you know, this, this wouldn't be based necessarily on hard data, but it is an assumption that there would be some language, there would be some language challenges with these students. So I think you do need to make some degree of assumption when, when you're talking about exactly how to address this. But as I said, I do think that you're providing, because it's not directly coincident only with ESL services, only with language services, that you are adding an additional nuance that probably isn't there already.
Okay, I'm not sure what that additional nuance is, but okay, I'll, I'll take your word for it. You're smarter than I am about these things. So I guess I would say, really, and I, I really, I would like us to do this as much as possible in the spirit of, we have an unmet need here. I think it's pretty unclear exactly what it is. And I do worry about singling out these particular students, because the, the truth is that we have children arriving here almost daily, from all over the world, from all different circumstances. And I, I worry very much about the message we send when we single out a particular group of students as a particular burden that we have to make a particular request for. So I don't like this, actually. But on the other hand, it gives us an opportunity to say, "Hey, federal government, you're not, you're not doing right by us. And here's a sort of a, a front-page story that we can use to say, you know, do a better job of helping us out." So with Mr. Malloy's help, I can probably support, I mean, in knowing how to advocate on this particular issue, I can probably support this.
Ms. Schultz.
So I just want to remind my colleagues, and I thank Ms. Hines for maybe stepping one foot onto the bridge, trying to get there, that, you know, some, some of you have no problem asking for in-state tuition for students who've been here for more than five years. It's the same thing. You're asking for a funding recognition, from your perspective, that you want to have that need met. But the problem is, that's not our need. That's a different need. That's another institution or another organization's responsibility to meet, and this is our responsibility to meet. And so the difference is that the rubber meets the road with, with we 12, and what priorities are we going to cut when Dr. Garza comes and says that we need some additional needs met? Because we have, you know, smaller class sizes, as Ms. Reed identified in one school, or I have a ninth-grade biology teacher who is struggling to meet the needs of a student who's a, a new arrival. And it's not the onesies, twosies that are in the normal, that is in our normal trajectory of what has happened, because that's a normal part of our multicultural community. And so that has always been, so that's already built in. This is what's not built in. This is the difficulty of the unexpected need that's been placed here, that we've got to meet the needs financially, that's beyond that which we typically prepare for, because we are multicultural, and we always do see a, a broad spectrum of students from around the world come and have educational needs that have to be met. Those we already attribute in our existing budget. This is beyond that need, and I think that's the nuance, is that it, it extends beyond that which we've previously budgeted.
Ms. Strauss.
Um, I will, I will not be supporting this motion. Many of the children who have come here have been placed because they're placed with their families. Their families are residents in Fairfax County, and therefore the students become residents and have a right to be in our schools. The underlying issue and question of all of this is, in fact, the legal citizenship status of the children, which is in question. And that is not a question that we ask. The students being released to their families in Virginia, and particularly in Fairfax County, that is why they've come, because their family has been contacted, and they would like to be reunited with their children. And that's why they are here. It isn't because these young people had no family or no one to contact in Virginia. They are here to be with their families. So, and for all those other reasons, I, I will not support this motion. Thank you.
Ms. McLaughlin.
Uh, I have a question that's been suggested to me, that because there's been some concern that the language might have been not as sensitive as we would want from the board, that if, and again, this was language that I, that staff drafted for me, that's very much in a legislative language. So if it's upsetting to my colleagues, I think it's very important, we try to then, you know, look at a way that makes it more reflective of this board. But I will say again, I sent this out at least a week ago, and I know everybody's been busy, but, you know, sometimes we have to just do our best work at the table, and I hope that in the end, people understand this is about doing our best work. So where it says "additional federal funding," a, additional federal funding aid to mitigate the impact, it would just say, "Additional federal funding aid to help address the needs of unaccompanied minors, unaccompanied children who've been relocated." So it's not negative. It's just saying that we are asking for additional federal funding to help with the needs of these children. There's nothing negative about it at all. But, so I guess my question, Chairman Kofax, is, as the original maker of my amendment, can I amend the wording? And, and I guess we then take a vote to see if people will accept the amended language to substitute this language?
I believe we can. I believe we can amend the language from the table. So I need a motion to allow Ms. McLaughlin to amend the current amendment, amend the language to the current amendment.
So moved if you need it from someone other than Ms. McLaughlin.
So moved a second, and then, well, she, she spoke to it a little bit, but--
Yeah.
Yes, we're getting the exact language from Ms. Goddard.
Yes, so technically, is Ms. McLaughlin making the amend, the, the motion to amend? I'm making the motion to amend. Second, Ms. Evans, right. So additional federal funding aid to help address-- Yep. To help address-- the needs. Yeah, to help address. Yep, the needs of, and then delete that. Unaccompanied children. No, no, it goes all the way through, it's just one sentence. Additional federal funding aid to help address the needs of unaccompanied children who've been relocated to Fairfax County through the Federal Department of Health and Human Services Office of Refugee Resettlement.
All right, so that is the amendment amendment on the table. Does anyone want to speak to that?
Should I still speak to it first?
Yes.
All right, so again, this is about creating language that I think is softer and more reflective of what I hear my colleagues' concerns are. But I think it's very important to understand that contrary to what my colleague Ms. Strauss said, the unaccompanied children at this point are not considered residents through their sponsors. They are right now part of the resettlement program, and they, their legal status in the United States has not been determined by the court system. So it is different. And I do think that this allows us just to, again, communicate that we do need federal funding for the needs of these children, and it doesn't make them, you know, I, I think, unfairly singled out, but it's speaking to a reality that we've been talking about now for definitely over an hour and a half. And bear in mind, we're not making this up in a vacuum. This is, this conversation is happening with governors, US senators, US congressmen, our local board supervisors, the Loudoun County board supervisors. We either want to be part of the voice, educate and lead on a need, or I think we do a disservice to all of our children in Fairfax County, because as Ms. Schultz pointed out, funding needs are funding needs.
Ms. Schultz.
I don't need to say anything else. I think it's a reasonable accommodation to address some discomfort that our colleagues have. I think you should have more discomfort over how we're going to meet the needs of these children corporately than empathetically, because you can't meet their educational needs empathetically if you don't have the money and the resources. So I, I think we need to move past the politicization that is happening here, and acknowledge that there are very real needs that need to be met, and it's not untoward to ask for those resources.
Thank you. Mr. Moon.
Thank you for suggesting a, a modified language for the motion. I'm going to support the amendment to amendment. And once that passes, I'm seeing that they'll perhaps pass, that I, based upon the same, same grounds I laid out at the beginning, that I will still be opposing the amendment itself.
Mr. Moon, could you say that again? I didn't quite hear what you had said. I just would like a clarification. I can't hear.
I'll be supporting the amendment to amendment, but once that passes, I'm seeing that they'll perhaps pass, but even after that passes, that I'll not be supporting the amendment itself.
Okay. Would anyone else like to speak? If not, I'm going to turn around and try to read this. The amended amendment on the table is, "Additional federal funding aid to help address the needs of unaccompanied children who have been relocated to Fairfax County through the Federal Department of Health and Human Services Office of Refugee Resettlement." Okay. We are voting first on adding the words. So that will be our first vote. Thank you for the clarification. And the words are the words highlighted there. So that will be our first vote. All of those in favor of adding the highlighted words and the changes to the amendment, please raise your hand. And that is Mr. Moon, Ms. Reed, Mr. McElveen, Ms. Hines, Ms. Smith is away from the table, Ms. Derinat Kofax, Ms. McLaughlin, Mr. Velkoff, Mr. Stork, Ms. Strauss, Ms. Evans, and Ms. Schultz. All right. So that passes, and now what we will do is we will actually vote on the amended amended, amended amendment as amended, to see if that will be part of our legislative package or as an amendment to it. So I think, does everybody understand what they're voting on at this point? All right. All of those in favor of the amended amendment as written behind me, please raise your hands. That is Ms. Reed, Ms. Hines, Ms. Derinat Kofax, Ms. McLaughlin, Mr. Stork, Ms. Evans, and Ms. Schultz. Those opposed? Mr. Moon, Mr. McElveen, Ms. Smith, Mr. Velkoff, and Ms. Strauss. The amendment passes. Ms. Derinat Kofax, Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am. I didn't want to say this while you were debating, because I didn't want to get us mired in additional, but I do think it's important for the public that might be listening. There is somewhat, some dispute over the number. So what's reported by the Office of Refugee Resettlement is one number, and what, and it's often hard for us to say that we have evidence of that same number. And so I didn't want tomorrow for us to start getting phone calls about, "So where are the 1,000?" How many is it now? 1,170 students, because we're unable to ask for that information, as was pointed out, I believe, very clearly by Ms. Hines earlier. So I just wanted the record to be clear that it's not easy for us to definitively say this is our number, and I just wanted to be clear about that. Thank you.
All right. And we now have another amendment, and I call on Ms. McLaughlin once again.
I'm now looking to see where we are. I believe it's number three.
Number three, page two.
Yep. "I move to amend the main motion by adding the following language, under a new position heading, compulsory school attendance slash religious exemption. The Fairfax County School Board respects a parent's right to request an exemption from compulsory school attendance for their student under the Virginia Code Section 22.1-254 by reason of, quote, 'bona fide religious training or belief,' unquote, or end quote, but believes that requirements to report on the academic progress of students receiving such an exemption should be aligned with reporting requirements already required of all other students receiving home-school instruction under 22.1-254.1." End quote.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Velkoff. And Ms. McLaughlin, you may speak to your amendment.
Okay. What I'd like to emphasize here is, in speaking with my colleagues at the work session, and then in an email that I sent to them earlier today, this is an issue that can impact up to 7,000 students in the Commonwealth of Virginia. And when we look at the fact that the Virginia Currie School of Education issued a report that basically identified this as being of great concern and the impact it has on the education of students, specifically for those who haven't studied the issue, and, and I do want to cite that the report was done in September 2012. But essentially what this results from is, Virginia is the only state out of 50 that does not have any requirements of any kind of the families who are granted a religious exemption for their children not to attend school. The other 49 states do have either, 46 specifically have just home-- The other 49 states do have either, 46 specifically have just home school instruction exemption only. So if you have a religious exemption, it still falls under a request to home school your child. They make no distinction between religious exemption and homeschooling. Of the three other states that do have a specific religious exemption, there still are educational components and requirements there. And so why does this matter? Well, here in Fairfax County, we represent about one in seven Virginians. So if you look at the 7,000 students are estimated to be impacted by this, we're talking at least 1,000 students. But more importantly, from the 48-page report that was issued by the Currie School of Education at UVA, what they reached in this report in their conclusions was Virginia is not only the only state that doesn't require any education of these students. Local school divisions frequently violate their legal obligation under the religious exemption status. This religious exemption statute, both as written and applied, may actually violate Virginia's constitution. Neither the US Constitution nor the US Supreme Court requires that states grant religiously motivated parents the authority to remove their children from school without any further educational obligations. And that regardless of the positive intentions of the religious exemption statute, a policy that permits more than 7,000 students to have unknown or unknowable educational opportunities should demand more careful examination by our educators, our families, and our policymakers. And keep in mind that if we do not engage in this examination as put in the executive summary, school divisions run the risk of continuing to violate even the existing law that could also be deemed unconstitutional and that thousands of Virginia students will potentially and unnecessarily face uncertain and unverifiable educational futures. To be more specific, during the VSB, the Virginia School Board Association Conference a year ago in November, both Mr. McElveen and I attended a session that was led by UVA Professor Andrew Block. He is now the Director of the Department of Juvenile Justice here in the Commonwealth of Virginia. But he spoke very passionately about how important it is that we as school leaders understand the importance of our voice communicating with the General Assembly that the existing statute is problematic and that it is not in the best interest of students in the way that it exists. And so my amendment is basically, again, requesting that our school board, as the largest school system in the Commonwealth, take a lead in saying how important it is to really look at the current religious exemption statute, that it can in fact be harmful to children, that since we have a constitutional obligation to ensure children receive an education, I think there's value to simply look at legislation that would amend the Virginia religious exemption statutes by providing protection that some sort of educational services are still being provided by these families to their children. And I would ask my colleagues that if you believe in our home school laws, if you believe that our home school laws are beneficial to our students, then putting this language in here says that we also believe that those students who have a religious exemption also deserve that same assurances and protections of receiving an education. So I hope my colleagues will support this and allow us to take a lead on this. Doug at Watts and Delegate Rust already brought it up last year and it was carried over for further study, but read the 48-page report. I think it's most important that we have a voice in this and we have a responsibility.
Mr. Velkoff, would you like to speak to your second?
Yes, I would briefly. I just want to thank Ms. McLaughlin for her advocacy and raising awareness. I think, well, I'll leave it at that. I certainly was not looking at this in as much detail as I wish I had been. And so I'm very happy to support you in this effort and I hope we can change the laws.
Mr. McElveen.
I would agree with Mr. Velkoff. I know this is something Ms. McLaughlin has been advocating for for some time, although we haven't had easy time discussing it as a board because we really haven't had the opportunity. I will be supporting it.
Ms. Strauss, followed by Ms. Evans and then Ms. Hines.
Yes, the religious exemption law in Virginia is unusual and I believe we are the only state that has it. And Ms. McLaughlin, it's my understanding and interpreting what you have put here, it does not define what a family would have to demonstrate that a student is receiving some sort of education at home. In other words, because usually in some of the home school legislation, there is a requirement for an approved curriculum or test or what have you, but I'm assuming that your motion here is broad enough that it would require families under their religious exemption that they would have to prove in some way that their students are getting some sort of education, but you're not asking for a specific curriculum because I know that all the years that we have had to struggle with this unusual Virginia law, one of the things that we know that the families in the Home School Association in Loudoun County, who has been the crafter of this and the one helping parents to put together their packets for this, that many of these parents don't want to have to adopt the home school curriculum. Our assumption has always been that parents are true to their word, that they are going to educate their children, but I agree with you that many of us are unsettled in that according to the way the current legislation is written, the state does give up all interest in the education of those children in that that is an unsettling position. So again, clarifying, Ms. McLaughlin, you're not asking for a specific curriculum to be adopted, a specific test. It's a little broader, but that, what you're asking is that if parents are asking for this religious exemption, that there be some proof that the children are in fact getting some instruction through their parents as they wish, correct?
Am I allowed to answer her question?
Yes, you may speak to her question.
Ms. Strauss, thank you for your clarifying question. As stated in the language, this amendment is, again, taking the position that we feel that when you look at the requirements of those families who get the home school exemption to report on the academic progress of their students, that this is saying we believe that those families granted religious exemption, that their reporting requirements on their students' progress would be aligned with what we require of our home school families. So it is, you are correct, it is not about discussing curriculum and what they're required to teach, but it is saying is, as we communicate to our home school families, your reporting requirements to let us know each year that your child is making academic progress, we would like that same reporting requirement of those families with religious exemption. And again, the language, I believe, was drafted such that it allows for the General Assembly to determine their own language. This is saying what is our position.
Right, okay, great. Well, thank you very much. I will support this. Thank you.
Ms. Evans.
Just very briefly, I too want to thank Ms. McLaughlin for raising awareness and bringing us the research on this. I think you've done an excellent job of educating a number of us, so I will support this.
Ms. Hines.
Yeah, I just have a question. Because this really is the first time we're sort of talking about it as a group and I myself had not had a chance to read a 48-page report. Do we know what the opposition is to this, who they are and what their argument is? Because I really don't know and I'm suspecting that this is a politically charged issue. So could someone help either the maker of the motion or Mr. Malloy? Is there an organized advocacy group that would be opposed to this and what could we expect to hear from them?
Mr. Malloy.
My assumption would be is that families who currently do not have to report anything in terms of receiving the religious exemption, this would actually put a new requirement upon them. So that, I think that's where the burden would lie, is that it would actually impose a new requirement on parents who currently can come in and simply seek a religious exemption. And then that's, in essence, the end of the conversation. This continues the conversation with the board. So it puts a little bit more of an onus on those parents.
Okay. And another question, if I could. Do we have any idea how many students in Fairfax County are, have this exemption?
Mr. Malloy.
I don't have that data, unfortunately.
Does the maker of the motion?
I'll be honest with you, when I asked Dr. Garza in closed session about that, it was my understanding that, you know, from year to year, we get these requests and then we never require these families to report again. So I'm going to go with the important point here that Fairfax County Public Schools makes up about one-seventh of the Commonwealth's population and for anyone who has concern about one child versus 1,000 children or more, we should care about whether they're getting an education or not.
Yeah, that was not, I'm sorry, that was not the point of my question. My question is just that I don't know, if I support this, how many people, you know, in the Hunter Mill district are going to have a problem with me about this? I mean, I agree with this in concept. I don't think we should be one of, what, two states that allows people to take a religious exemption for their students and for their children and has no accountability to the school system. So, you know, I will support this, but I will tell you, it troubles me that we are here talking about something that is so politically charged without an understanding of what the opposition to this might be. We have not had a community conversation about this. So I'll just register my concern about that.
Mr. Moon.
I may have to put Mr. Foster in a very unfair position by asking these questions. I missed the first part of an argument or supporting statement by Mrs. McLaughlin. So it might have been already given out, so please forgive me. I was in the back. So we are only one of those two states giving religious exemptions?
Mr. Malloy, could you answer that? Or Mr. Foster, I'm sorry. You directed to Mr. Foster.
Only one of the two states in the country allowing religious exemption?
Mr. Moon, I mean, we offer a religious exemption. I have to tell you, I don't know sitting here which other states offer or don't offer.
Do you know of?
Mr. Moon, just one second. I believe the maker of the motion knows the answer.
Yes, as pointed out in the UVA report, Virginia is the only state out of four where there is a religious exemption.
Without accountability.
Without any requirement of any educational services.
Okay, has there ever been a called challenge for mandating accountability when the religious exemption is given anywhere in the state, in the country? Probably you don't know the answer to that.
I don't know the answer to that.
What do you think might be the impact of the Euro versus Wisconsin 1972 case on something like this?
On the proposed amendment?
On the proposed amendment.
I need to review it again. One moment.
I'm sorry, again, again, I think I might have put you in an unfair question by not asking these questions in advance.
Right, I mean, we need to tread very carefully in light of that, the court ruling that you referenced, Mr. Moon. You know, I don't like to give off-the-cuff answers to, you know, important questions like this. I certainly, I could report back to you and the rest of the board, but we do need to be cognizant with this amendment of the case you referenced.
I mean, that is exactly my point. Without getting the benefit of legal analysis from the legal counsel or constitutional issues, this particular amendment will entail, really concerns me that, that I believe in public education, I believe in providing education at the same time, I strongly believe in free exercise of religion, that as a religious person myself, I don't want government to put any restriction or inhibition on my part to exercise my religion, that the requirements to be followed by home school parents, I mean, there are certain things that, so the question will be this, you start reporting and then if there's a problem with academic progress, now then we're going to step in and stop someone from exercising their right under religious exemption? I just have so many questions on this. And I strongly believe in free exercise of religion, that I will not be able to support
Any other comments before my go-back?
I've been on the board almost 11 years and I have to admit, I've considered this issue often as we get requests for religious exemption. And to be honest, and I'm kind of, I blame myself for not frankly being more attentive to this a long time ago. Every child in Virginia should have an education. I don't believe in ignorance. I just don't. And the question is how, what kind of education? And for that, I deeply believe that parents have a right to define what that is. But I also recognize when I say that, that there has to be some definition of what education is. And I've campaigned and knocked on doors a long time. I've met a lot of homeschooling parents. In fact, I have some good friends who homeschooled their children through most of their years, including high school years, and they did a fabulous job, but they also knew that they had an expectation that their child had to meet some minimum level of education. That's what, that's why we have a civil society, that's a reasonable expectation of all of us. This, I think, is a start. It maybe isn't going to be made into law tomorrow, but I know that if we don't, if this education board isn't advocating for educating all children, then we frankly are not doing what I believe we're elected to do. And I realize that's my personal view, but I sure hope that you all think about that, that our job is to help kids get educated and to have an exemption that doesn't allow that or doesn't even have any kind of minimum expectation for that is just wrong. And we're not talking about offending or going against anybody's religion, we're talking about some basic educational expectations for every single child that lives in the Commonwealth of Virginia, in particular, those that live in Fairfax County. And I'll be happy to work with any parent who has any particular concerns about what that means. But I tell you, the home school parents that I have talked to, and again, I've talked to many of them, they have been very appreciative of the fact that frankly, we've opened our school up for some classes. I'd like to see us open up our schools to more classes for home school kids and that's an issue that this board's talked about and hasn't supported in the past, but I hope someday we will support that. But in general, our job is to make sure that every child gets an education, not necessarily one that we specifically define, but gets an education that we'd all recognize has a minimum level of knowledge and understanding of the world around them. And that should not be abridged on account of anything. And I do not think it's too much to ask, nor will I ever believe that it's too much to ask, that we have parents that identify how they're going to do that and how, and what that minimum standard, and that minimum standard that we have identified here is met. If somebody comes up with a different standard that seems to address that, I'm very open to that, but to not do something at all is wrong. I blame myself for really waiting 11 years to address this issue. I deeply appreciate the fact that Ms. McLaughlin has done that and I am absolutely going to be supporting this and I urge every single one of you to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
So on the surface, I kind of like this and I thought it's a good idea because we should keep track of children being educated, but it's always dangerous when you vote on something and you're not sure of the consequences of it. And listening to Mr. Moon's comments, I don't know enough about... And listening to Mr. Moon's comments, I don't know enough about the requirements of students receiving home instruction, about their reporting requirements, to know if there's a conflict with whatever that reporting is. That would be a barrier with the religious exemption piece. I don't know if there's a history piece to it, a science piece to it. And I don't know if this late date, if anybody can give me any information about what the requirements are like for that. I mean, I like the idea that there's going to be some kind of accountability. And I understand this is just something in our legislative packet and would have to go through the process, but I don't want to step into, I don't know, a deep, deep puddle when I don't have to. I don't know if there's anybody that can provide any clarification or anything about that.
So your question basically is, is there certain requirements for homeschool children? And perhaps one of the reasons the religious exemption existed is some of those requirements may be in conflict with the, that's what your question in essence?
That's kind of my question. And I don't know if this is better if we just say that there should be some kind of reporting requirements and maybe not tie it to home instruction. I don't know enough about it to know if that's a hang-up there or not. And I don't see anybody.
I see, I see. Crickets. But no, I understand that. Wait, yes, I'll get to you guys. All right. If anyone can do that, just raise your hand, let me know, and I'll call on you. And thank you, Ms. Smith. I understand your point. Next is Ms. Schultz.
I'm just going to very, I'm just going to very briefly read the actual code that we're discussing, because sometimes I think we get bogged down in the theory. And the code says, "A school board shall," and that's an operative word, "shall excuse from attendance at school one any pupil together with his parents by reason of bona fide religious training or belief is conscientiously opposed to attendance at school for purposes of this subdivision bona fide religious training or belief does not include essentially political, sociological, or philosophical views or merely a personal code." And then it goes on to the rest. So I am vigorously agreeing with Ms. Smith, and I'm vigorously agreeing with Mr. Stark. Yes, I think something should be done. I don't know what it is. And I don't know that I have the context at this point to support this, but I appreciate the notion that maybe we need to look a little bit more at this. But if the fundamental, which is already laid down in Virginia code, has already been contemplated by our legislators, then I got to think that they maybe did the homework on this. I don't think that they were going to pass this without looking into what constitutes bona fide religious training or conscientious opposition. So, not that I necessarily want to defer to what the legislators have already done, because in some cases, I think we've got to undo that. But I don't know that I have enough. So I'm somewhere in the middle, which is a nice place to be for a change.
Well, you're going to have to get off the middle and vote soon. Let's see. Any other comments, I have go-backs? All right. I'll go to my first go-back, and that will be Ms. McGlaughlin.
I appreciate what my colleague, Mr. Moon, was raising in terms of his concern about how does this impact families who care very deeply about their religious convictions, and will they be upset by a position that this board may take and that we communicate to our General Assembly? But what's so compelling about the UVA report is that in its executive summary alone, it says that absolutely you want to balance the rights and choices of parents, but also the equally important responsibility, the constitutional responsibility, to consider the interests of the state and the children themselves. Forty-nine states, forty-nine out of 50, believe and absolutely allow for people who want to exercise their decision to homeschool their child. Three of them, along with the Commonwealth of Virginia, decided to go ahead and create a more explicit exemption for religious exemption. But what all 49 of them do believe is there needs to be requirements of families to demonstrate that their children are making academic progress if they, through religious conviction, choose not to have their child attend public, parochial, or private school. So I really am struggling to understand some of the consternation here, because I'm not drafting a General Assembly law here. This was just a position that we're saying, that when you look at the national landscape, Virginia's out of touch in terms of its responsibility for these children and their education. And for anyone who wasn't aware of the story, this started because Professor Block was approached by a young man whose family was granted religious exemption, and he wanted to go to college, but because of Virginia's lax law, he never received any education of any kind from his family. And so he approached the Child Advocacy Clinic and said, "I'm worried about my siblings, and I'm worried about all these other children." And that's what prompted this study. That young man ended up having to go supplement his education, and he ended up going on to Georgetown University. But this young man came forward very bravely and said, "I appreciate that everybody was concerned about my parents' conviction, but did anybody care about the fact that I was guaranteed under the Constitution that I would get an education?" So for anyone who's having consternation about this amendment, ask yourself, if you do not believe in the homeschooling requirements that we have to ensure that our children receive an education when their parents choose not to enroll them in our public schools, then go ahead and vote this down. But if you believe that our homeschool requirements benefit and are good for our children, then how can you want to deny that from the other children who are getting a religious exemption? I really do hope that people have heard what Mr. Stark said, what I've said, and many others. This is the right thing to do. And to Ms. Hines' concern, we have talked about this. I brought this up during our legislative program. And if people didn't feel like we talked about enough, well, that's, again, one of the challenges we have of a board of 12 and a limited agenda when we have these items on there. But, you know, as Mr. Velkoff noted and Mr. Stark noted, I have been speaking about this for a very long time now. And I really am hopeful we're finally going to take a lead on something that matters to at least 7,000 children in the Commonwealth of Virginia.
Thank you. My next go-back is Ms. Smith.
Thank you. You know, I do support the idea of having some kind of reporting requirement that kids are being educated. My issue is I don't have enough knowledge to know if that should be the same requirement of students receiving home instruction. And so I pulled up the UVA report, and, you know, then hear it saying, "They're granted a religious exemption. They're no longer legally obligated to educate their children." So I'm in a position to do something that I barely ever do on this board. I'm going to have to abstain on this. I truly believe I should be voting yes or no on both, most things, but I don't feel like I have enough information to be able to vote on this. I have too many questions to know if this is the right way to do it. I do think that there should be some kind of requirement. I don't know, tying it to homeschool instruction is correct. Thank you.
Mr. McLaughlin.
So I think this might get at what Ms. Smith was asking, but I think it would be good to just give a little background, and Mr. Malloy can supplement this if necessary. But just so you're aware, what happened last year, Delegate Tom Rust brought forward a bill which would ask for the Virginia Department of Education to survey school boards on their current processes for dealing with these situations. And while that bill died in committee, it's possible it would come up again. But at this point, I don't think the General Assembly is ready to take any action on this. They just want to study it further. And as for the precise amount of students affected by this, I think the number for Virginia, I think, is around 7,000. And assuming that, you know, Fairfax County has one-seventh of the population of Virginia, you have to, you can extrapolate that we have probably about 1,000 students in the county that would be affected.
Ms. Hines.
Yeah. Just, this is tough. Getting back to the question, and, you know, Mrs. McGlaughlin talked about how, just now, about how, you know, if we support the homeschool requirements, then, you know, we should support this as well. And I think the point, though, is that homeschooling and the religious exemption are two different things. People go, I think, as I understand it, they go for the religious exemption for different reasons than they go for homeschooling. And it's probably because, I'm guessing, and again, I don't feel like I've had a chance to talk to people in the community who've done this, so I don't really know where they are on this. But I'm assuming it's because they see things in our curriculum that they don't like, that they don't want to teach their children. And so asking them to provide the same information that homeschool parents provide every year, I think, means that we're telling them to teach what we expect homeschool parents to teach. And I, I mean, that's what it looks like to me. And I don't know, I just don't know that we can ask folks who have asked for religious exemption. I would much rather, I guess I would much just rather see this more loose, to just say, you know, we encourage the General Assembly to provide some oversight, some accountability. Because it worries me making this link between homeschooling and religious exemption. If the religious exemption parents wanted to homeschool, they would do that. They're asking for something different, I think.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, homeschooling and the religious exemptions, as you, you know, besides, as you stated, they are two different things. Religious exemption is based upon religious faith, that they want to be exempted from public school and public school curriculum, et cetera. And that fundamental right was formed, reaffirmed by the Supreme Court in the Yoder versus Wisconsin in 1972 case. I'm not sure whether we are asking us to go against that at this point. And as far as linking this to the homeschooling requirements, if I'm not mistaken, I'm just looking at this, because I did take a look at this several weeks ago. And I'm looking at it again on the website, that for the homeschooling, you would have to have parent with a high school education. So if your parent is not, does not have a high school education, then what? Cannot exercise religious exemption? Or have to hire someone with a teacher certification? Is that we're going to start requiring that? And got to produce an evaluation which show, evidence shows that attained certain level on the nationally known standardized achievement test? Or other evaluations certified by licensed teacher? Or report card or transcript from a community college? And then our superintendent would have to review all those and got to certify that they met all those requirements? I do not know how many, you know, students we have in Fairfax County with the, under religious exemptions. So we're going to now require some of our staff members start doing that? I think there are just way too many questions for me to be able to support this amendment.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Strauss.
I was simply going to reference the reporting requirements in the code, which Mr. Moon referenced. However, I am willing to ask that some reporting requirement be requested. And I still think the language is broad enough that parents could still ask for religious exemption. And it would be, again, a much broader, it would not be as restrictive as homeschooling, as I understand from Ms. McGlaughlin. I do remember when this law was passed, and I do remember the debates. And there will be, obviously, people who will be very much opposed to any kind of a requirement. So, but I'm still willing to vote for at least some sort of reporting requirement.
Ms. Reed.
I've been listening carefully to all the discussion. And I think, for me, this fundamentally just comes down to the issue of accountability. Several people have talked about it. And I think if we're approving exemptions, for whatever reason, that I think it's just as reasonable to ask that the individual then provide some evidence that those children are being educated. So for that reason, I'm very fine with this language. And if you read it literally, "We believe that requirements to report on progress should be aligned with reporting requirements." That's very soft language, really, right? So I'm very comfortable with that. And again, we're not drafting legislation here. So the intent, I think, is accountability, to ensure some accountability, and I support that.
Let me just check in. Ms. Schultz. All right. You haven't had a go-back.
I just want to say thank you, Ms. Reed. This is why sometimes talking at the table helps, because what you just said is enough for me. I'll vote for it.
And Ms. McGlaughlin, you have the last go-back.
I just wanted to clarify something that Mr. Moon said. Please bear in mind, again, there are 46 states that have absolutely no religious exemption laws of any kind. They just have a homeschooling opt-out. So in terms of our concerns about whether this board's now stepping into a constitutional quagmire, it's my understanding from the UVA report and the existing laws around the United States, that's not a problem. What does concern me is we're the only state out of 50 with zero educational requirements of just reporting structure of academic progress. I appreciate that everyone has said the language is broad. Mr. Malloy and I worked very carefully to make sure it would be very broad. And I do actually believe, based on the fact that it was a year ago that the General Assembly was going to carry it over for study, this is the year now that we have a chance that they carried it over last year. Let's take a position this year, and hopefully, again, it's a very broad position that says we believe this is important. And based on the national landscape, we're behind the times to not have this request, that there be some sort of reporting requirement. I know in the end, and Mr. Malloy knows this, the General Assembly is going to decide what kind of language to do or not do. But as educators and board members of the largest school system, we should support this.
All right. After a lot of discussion, thank you all for those informative thoughts. The amendment on the table is that the Fairfax County School Board respects the parent's right to request an exemption from compulsory school attendance for their student under Virginia Code Section 221.1-254 by reason of bona fide religious training or belief, but believes that requirements to report on the academic progress of students receiving such an exemption should be aligned with reporting requirements already required of all other students receiving home instruction under 22.1-254-1. All of those in favor of this amendment, please raise your hand. Ms. Reed, Mr. McElveen, Ms. Darinett Kofax, Mr. Velkoff, Ms. McGlaughlin, Mr. Stark, Ms. Strauss, Ms. Evans, and Ms. Schultz. Those opposed? Mr. Moon? Abstentions? Abstentions, Ms. Hines, and Ms. Smith? That amendment passes. Ms. Smith, I want to call you on a motion, for your motion to divide.
I move to divide the main motion to vote separately on position on fiscal autonomy for elected school boards.
Second.
We will just vote on dividing the motion now, so all
May I speak to it?
Oh, you want to speak to it? Yes, ma'am. I'm so sorry.
I just want to say that if you vote yes on us dividing, then the next motion would be to take out, to vote on whether we keep fiscal autonomy in. So if you vote yes, well, then we'll have another motion to talk about the details of the fiscal autonomy. So I think we've been really talking so nicely tonight that you should vote yes so that we get to talk somewhere. So I ask for your support on this motion.
All right. The motion is to divide. And all of those in favor of the motion to divide? Mr. Moon, Ms. Smith, Ms. Darinett Kofax, Mr. Velkoff, Ms. McGlaughlin, Mr. Stark, Ms. Mr. Moon, Ms. Smith, Ms. Darrenat Kofax, Ms. Vel, Mr. Valkov, Ms. McLaughlin, Mr. Stork, Ms. Strauss, Ms. Evans, and Ms. Schultz. Opposed? Ms. Reed and Mr. McElveen. Any abstentions? Ms. Hines, we are on a robust discussion to talk. Oh, I'm sorry, I lost track. All right. Ms. Smith.
Well, you guys surprised me. I move to amend the main motion by removing the position on fiscal autonomy for local elected school boards from the 2015 legislative program.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Schultz.
Third, can I third it?
Not at this time. Ms. Smith, you may speak.
You know, this is a position I've taken since I first got on the school board in 2002, that I don't feel that it would benefit us to go down the fiscal autonomy route. I don't think it's something that would happen in the General Assembly anyway. I understand all of our frustrations with some of our funding authorities, but I can't support putting this position in the legislative packet. So I would like to be able to vote no for it. Thank you.
Ms. Schultz.
Even a broken clock is right twice a day. And I love this time of year, because Ms. Smith and I stand arm in arm on this one. And I love being compatriots with her over this. I think that if you, if we, we survey a lot, what parents think and what taxpayers think, and we get the sense. And as the Chair of Public Engagement, I can tell you, if we went to the taxpayers of Fairfax County and said, hey, how do you think about the Fairfax County School Board having individual, separate taxing authority so that we get to go into your wallets, too? I'm pretty sure that there would be a resounding response. So I, I plead with my colleagues to inject a little bit of common sense, narrow our priorities, which I'll talk about when we get to the main motion, and say, okay, we've got other ways to solve our issues financially, and we should spend our time pursuing those.
Thank you. Ms. Evans.
Yes, thank you. I, I'm going to oppose the motion to take the fiscal autonomy language out of our legislative package. In years past, I used to oppose taking it out, but with more reluctance. I used to say, well, watch what you wish for. Would we really want this if we had it? But as time has gone on, I would actually like to press for this. I don't think the state legislature is going to move in this direction. However, I had occasion just recently to visit Houston ISD and viewed what they do there with some envy. They told me that they had just passed a $2 billion school bond. And I thought at first that they had misspoken, but they said, no, that's what they needed for their facilities' needs. So I hope that the legislature looks on this kindly, even though I doubt that. But I'm going to oppose this motion.
Mr. Malloy is smiling. Mr. Stork.
I think it's a pretty simple it for me. I, I strongly support school boards having the ability to, to fund their responsibilities and to be accountable to voters. I, I want voters to hold me accountable, not only for the decisions we make about how this organization operates, but also the money that we spend. And I'm happy to take, take responsibility, accept responsibility, if the voters believe that we're spending money in an inappropriate way, or frankly, we're spending more money than they think is appropriate. And that's what this is about. I have no illusions about legislators supporting or approving this anytime in the future, but it is about accountability, and I'm happy to stand up and say it. I'll be accountable. Thank you.
Ms. McLaughlin.
I get to join the Elizabeth Cathy Smith, We're Unusual Voting Buddies Club for the night. I really do appreciate the breadth of perspective among my colleagues on this one. But when we just spent hours talking about what I think are two actually smaller impactful legislative positions compared to fiscal autonomy, I will just say that this one, I believe, our school board would have a tremendous amount of responsibility to hold major town hall discussions with our constituents and really hear from them on what they think about this. This would be enormous shift. And I appreciate that Ms. Smith has taken this out, because I remember a year ago, the reaction of individual board supervisors when they saw this in our legislative package. And it was upsetting to them. And I think that part of our building our relationship with the board supervisors is, we should talk about this if this is what we really think and believe. But I don't think that conversation's happened. It's not happened with the public. And I'm very supportive of separating this from the main motion.
Mr. Moon.
I thought this was, has been already separated. Okay, thank you. I, I do not need to repeat-
To just remove it altogether. Hers is to remove the position. Number five. Right.
Oh, I see. Okay, all right. I pass.
It's divided. Any other comments before we vote? Oh, Janie, I'm sorry, I missed you.
Thank you. The position supporting fiscal autonomy has been our legislative package for probably over 20 years. And I support keeping it there. I am not going to fall on my sword or run out to advocate for it, because I think being realistic, certainly Fairfax County and the voters in Virginia are not inclined to give fiscal autonomy to school boards. I understand that. But I also grew up in a part of the country where all school divisions had fiscal autonomy. And I believe in direct accountability to citizens. We spend their money to educate their children, and I think we should be directly answerable to the people whose money we spend. I think that that is fairer to the taxpayer. So I support keeping it in there. But I am not about to go out and create a huge campaign, because I think Virginia will not support it. So thanks.
Ms. Hines.
Thank you. Just briefly, I do mention this when I'm out talking to people in the community about, you know, please help us advocate for funding for the schools. And I have to say, you know, look, we're, we're dependent, and, you know, I wish that we could raise our own money. And then they say, well, have you asked for that? And I can say, yes, here it is in our legislative package. Every year, we tell the General Assembly that we're willing to take on that responsibility. Because if we're going to spend the money, I think we should be raising the money. So I think it's really an important part of our legislative package.
All right. We shall vote. All of those in favor of the, the motion to remove the position of fiscal autonomy for elected school boards from the 2015 legislative program? Favor the motion to remove. All right. That is Ms. Smith, Ms. McLaughlin, and Ms. Schultz. All opposed? Mr. Moon, Ms. Reed, Mr. McElveen, Ms. Hines, Ms. Darrenat Kofax, Mr. Valkov, Mr. Stork, Ms. Strauss, and Ms. Evans. All right. The motion to remove that fails. All right. So we are back to the main motion as amended. And I think I'm going to need help up on the screen, right? Because there were some changes. So we will wait for the main motion as amended. If you need a moment. So here's the main motion as amended. And it reads, "I move that the school board adopted 2015 Fairfax County School Board Legislative Program as detailed in the agenda item and as amended, one, by adding the following language to the education funding, federal position under the existing heading the Fairfax County School Board supports. Additional federal funding to help address the needs of unaccompanied children who have been relocated to Fairfax County through the Federal Department of Health and Human Services Office of Refugee Resettlement. And, two, by adding the following language under a new position heading compulsory school attendance religious exemption. The Fairfax County School Board respects a parent's right to request an exemption from compulsory school attendance for their student under Virginia Code 22.1-254 by reason of bona fide religious training or belief, but believes that requirements to report on the academic process of students receiving such an exemption shall be aligned with reporting requirements already required of all other students receiving home instruction under 22.1.254.1." All right. So that is our new thing, and we shall vote on that at this moment. All of those in favor? That would be Mr. Moon, Ms. Reed, Mr. McElveen, Ms... Is it unanimous? I didn't look. No. We're, we're voting on the entire package? No, we weren't. I think we were done with discussion. Is, is this, is there a very-
I called, I called the question.
All right. All right. The question, okay, the question has been called by Ms. Hines and seconded by Mr. Valkov to vote on the amendment with, vote on the call of the question. All right. All those in favor of calling the question to vote on the amendment without further discussion on the package. Mr. Moon, Ms. Reed, Mr. McElveen, Ms. Hines, Ms. Smith, Ms. Darrenat Kofax, Mr. Valkov, Ms. Strauss. Those opposed? Ms. McLaughlin, Mr. Stork, Ms. Evans, Ms. Schultz. The motion to call the question passes. We will now take a vote on the legislative program as amended. All of those in favor of the legislative program as amended? Mr. Moon, Ms. Reed, Mr. McElveen, Ms. Hines, Ms. Smith, Ms. Darrenat Kofax, Mr. Valkov, Ms. McLaughlin, Mr. Stork, Ms. Strauss, Ms. Reed. Opposing? Ms. Schultz. No abstention. This passes. Thank you all for this discussion. We are not done. We now go to policy 1415, and I, 1450, excuse me. And I have a motion from Mr. Moon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just hope that this motion does not generate to our debate. I move that the school board adopt policy 1415 non-discrimination as detailed in the agenda item.
Mr. Valkov.
Second.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Moon.
Just very, very briefly, this policy, which is actually just updating based upon the recent Supreme Court decision, and also, I have been waiting for this to happen for a long, long time. Finally, we are getting to the point where our school board is declaring to public that we do not believe in discriminating any student, employee, or applicant for employment based upon sexual orientation.
Mr. Valkov.
Yes, I'm proud that we are now granting protection to our employees that we previously have only granted to our students. And it's kind of stunning how quickly things have changed. In 2006, of course, we passed a constitutional amendment that banned same-sex marriage. And it was quite an unusual amendment. When you think about the, the history of the Constitution of Virginia, which has its roots in the Virginia Declaration of Rights, of course, we all know that those contributed to the Bill of Rights, the Declaration of Rights of Man, et cetera, coming from George Mason from this county. And the, the key characteristic of those rights is that they enumerate rights that legislatures may not take away from individuals. And that constitutional amendment, which has now been turned around, to my knowledge, is the first article that actually forbids legislatures from granting rights. So I'm very happy that we finally got here, and the change has happened, honestly, quite quickly. And to those of you who have been saying that some of these changes, the other changes that we've been talking about being kind of unimaginable, I think, I think we need to have a lot more optimism. Thank you.
Ms. Strauss.
I am pleased to vote in support of this. We've talked about this. We've attempted this many times in the past years and have been unsuccessful. But I believe that there has, I think the sense is that there's been enough change within the community that, that we can, in fact, go forward with this in a proper way and add this to our policy. So I am pleased to see this, this evening.
Mr. Stork.
I think we all recognize, at least in our community, that this is long overdue. I know the board has looked at trying to do this many times before, and, and the advice we've gotten consistently from counsel is that it would be problematic in terms of the response of the state to any activity, action that we would take. So it is a wonderful moment for all of us to finally, fully recognize what we, I think, have practiced as an institution, but to recognize formally in, in our policies that discrimination of any type like this will not be accepted. So it is my pleasure to support this as well.
Ms. Schultz.
So at the bottom of our previous page, we had back to main motion as amended and discussion, which we ignored. And there's a very important reason why it's important to talk about a main motion, because there was a lot more in that main motion than-
But the question was called-
Excuse me.
The question was called-
Then, then was provided in the amendment discussion. And part of it led up to this discussion, including the, what I call the catch-all, everything, and the kitchen sink legislative package that we just passed, including supporting a constitutional amendment for the equal protection of women, which I wouldn't have voted for. It's one of the reasons I wasn't going to vote for our legislative package, and then I didn't. I spent some time tallying up the bullets in our legislative package and came up with 226 individual bullets in our package. And we have once again slid over into a issue here with non-
Matter of Chairman, point of order.
No, that's not a point of order, because I haven't finished the talking, Mr. Valkov. The same issues that occurred with our legislative package, for me, occur in this amendment that's before us and the adoption of this policy. I really liked where Mr. Moon was going with the beginning of his speech, when he said he's been waiting a long time to, to say and embrace the fact that we don't discriminate. But then he kept talking. And that's the problem, is I think this board's efforts need to be around not further subdividing and putting into classes groups of employees, groups of students, groups of people, against who we articulate we're not going to discriminate against. Because the further we subdivide, and the further we put into protected classes, the more divisive we become. As opposed to just saying, we're not going to discriminate. We're going to pick the best person for the job regardless. We're going to put the best teacher in front of a class regardless. My students don't need white males in the front of the classroom to teach them in order for them to learn best. They're going to learn best from their best teacher. And if we start adopting policies that end the period at we choose not to discriminate, rather than subdividing classes of employees or students, I think we're going to actually do a lot better. Because the problem becomes, you know, are we going to put into a protected class a woman who either has children, because she might understand children better, so therefore she might be an educator, a better educator? Or are we going to put into a protected class a woman who doesn't have children, because she might be a better employee, because she won't have a pull at home? And there is a point at which there are so many protected classes that we've lost the force- the forest for the trees of let's not discriminate, period. Instead of having the ellipsis and have the ever-increasing list of those who we're not going to do something for or who we are going to do something for. So just like I wasn't going to vote for the equal rights protection for a federal constitutional amendment and what business this board has entertaining that in a legislative package, and we get beat up every single time by our colleagues in Richmond about having no focus on our priorities and trying to clarify what this board's about. And having 265 points in our legislative package isn't helpful. And having an ever-increasing list of subdivided categories of people by which we're going to place them into a protected class rather than developing the culture that respects and honors and hires and retains the best employees is the best form of leadership.
Thank you. I wholeheartedly support this motion. It is long overdue for FCPS to be taking the position that we will not discriminate on the basis of sexual orientation. And I do want to thank, in particular, Mr. Moon, who has been very alert to this issue and came up with this motion pretty much just as soon as possible. So I appreciate his monitoring this situation and bringing this to us, and I do very strongly support this.
Ms. McLaughlin?
I want to echo the passion of what Mr. Stork communicated and Ms. Evans and many of my other colleagues on this issue. While I appreciate what my colleague Ms. Schultz is saying, I actually do believe that it is public language like this that helps create and sustain a culture in our great school system about wanting the very best teachers we can and assuring each and every one of them that we just do not believe in discrimination of any kind for any individual. So I'm very appreciative of Mr. Moon bringing this forward and look forward to supporting it. Can I raise two hands?
Ms. Hines?
Yeah. Just briefly, I think that the idea that if we just say, let's not discriminate, that that will sort of automatically work. I think history shows us that that's not the case. It doesn't work unless oppressed groups are heard as protected classes. We don't know we're discriminating against people. We, in the majority, we in the dominant culture, don't know that we're discriminating against others unless we hear them tell us that we are. And they're, you know, these folks are protected classes for a reason, because history has shown that if we don't protect those classes, that they will be discriminated against and oppressed. So I think this is an important thing that we have to continue to keep an eye on, and I appreciate the opportunity to vote for this.
All right. We will now take a vote on adopting policy 1450 nondiscrimination as detailed in our agenda item. All those in favor of this motion? Mr. Moon, Ms. Reed, Mr. McElveen, Ms. Hines, Ms. Smith, Ms. Darnatt-Kofax, Mr. Valkoff, Ms. McLaughlin, Mr. Stork, Ms. Strauss, Ms. Evans. Opposed? Ms. Schultz. The motion passes. Next, we will go to confirmation of our action taken in a closed meeting. This is the portion of the meeting where the board will confirm any action regarding issues that were discussed in the closed meeting. These issues may include action taken regarding student disciplinary matters. Board members have discussed each individual case, and at this time will make several motions to confirm the recommended action. I call on Ms. Reed for a motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Based on the recent decision of the Circuit Court of Fairfax County regarding the contract of a teacher, I move to accept the recommendation of the Division Superintendent to dismiss such teacher identified in closed meeting and further authorize the chairman to send a letter to the teacher with the board's decision.
Seconded by Ms. Evans. All of those in favor? Mr. Moon, Ms. Reed, Mr. McElveen, Ms. Hines, Ms. Smith, Ms. Darnatt-Kofax, Mr. Valkoff, Ms. Stork, Ms. Strauss, Ms. Evans. Opposed? Abstaining? Ms. McLaughlin and Ms. Schultz abstaining. I call on Ms. Strauss for another motion.
Thank you. I move to deny the school reassignment appeal of a student who possessed, used, and distributed illegal drugs on school property at a school-sponsored activity and to confirm the disciplinary decision of the Division Superintendent.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Moon. All those in favor of the motion? Mr. Moon, Ms. Reed, Mr. McElveen, Ms. Hines, Ms. Smith, Ms. Darnatt-Kofax, Mr. Valkoff, Mr. Stork, Ms. Strauss, Ms. Evans. Opposed? Ms. McLaughlin abstention. Ms. Schultz. The motion passes. We will next move on to our consent agenda. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's Rules, provide a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Most of the items listed under the consent agenda have gone through board committee review and recommendation. Documentation concerning these items has been provided to all board members and the public in advance to assure an extensive and thorough review. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member prior to the meeting. 5.01, approve the minutes of the October 23, 2014 regular school board meeting. 5.02, award a contract for the Keen Mill Elementary School renovation project to VF Pavone Construction Company in the amount of $15,638,000 and authorize the Division Superintendent or the Assistant Superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 5.03, appoint individuals to serve on committees as detailed in the agenda item. Any objection to consent agenda? Hearing and seeing no objection, the consent agenda is approved. The following items are new business agenda items. There will not be a vote tonight on these items, but action is scheduled at a future meeting. 6.01, approve changes to the list of middle and high school court sufferings for the 2015-2016 school year as recommended by the Course Review Committee and is detailed in the agenda item. 6.02, award a contract for the Langley High School renovation project to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder and authorize the Division Superintendent or the Assistant Superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 6.03, adopt the resolution approving the 2015 sale of school bonds and authorize the chairman or vice chair with the advice of legal counsel for the school division to negotiate, execute, and administer the school board tax certificate and all their documents as deemed appropriate and advisable, and do the things necessary to complete the transaction contemplated by the resolution as detailed in the agenda item. Superintendent Matters are next. Dr. Garza?
Given the hour, I think I'll pass.
All right. We will go back to report. We will go back to reports. And first, I call on Mr. Stork to talk about the Joint Budget Development Committee held on November 5.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I'm sorry for the delay in getting that mic on. We met this past Wednesday, and it was our final meeting before we meet with the respective boards. I think we've accomplished a lot. The results of that, at least the activity as through Wednesday, is posted in our Wednesday meeting. The final version of that I hopefully will have as of tomorrow, and I will then distribute it. The core of it is what we've been, I think many of you have heard and discussed with each of you over the last really many months, but it's a, kind of addresses really three critical issues. One is the actual language and the conversation and the process for how we work, we do our budgets. The second part is where are there common, where is there common ground, things that we can be doing together that will either save money or provide potentially more revenue for us? And the third is maybe, I would say, the bigger picture view of, you know, how do we kind of put together our goals and strategies better so that we really better interact and create more synergy between us? So those are the three broad themes that I think you'll see in the package. I will again be sending something out very soon, but we will be meeting with the Board of Supervisors the Tuesday before Thanksgiving. I'm not sure the exact date of that, but that will be our conversation with the board, where we will be reporting out the work of the committee. So I look forward to everybody attending that meeting, but in the meantime, we'll get some information out. The other members of the committee that can also speak to this issue are Mr. McElveen and Ms. Reed. We are available if you have any questions, but I will get something out for you to look at further. Thank you.
Mr. Moon, the Audit Committee met earlier today.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We, all the committee discussed the hiring process for the Auditor General. We do have a recommendation, and that will be posted, I'm hoping, by 5:00 tomorrow so that we can all review it over the weekends for full board discussion on Monday.
Thank you. We did not have a forum tonight. So next on the agenda is board matters, and Mr. Moon. Back to you.
I had very long two weeks, and I'm going to debrief you on those, my last two weeks some other time. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Moon. Ms. Reed?
I'll just present one item tonight, and that is to say I'm looking forward to the celebration of Veterans Day at Flint Hill Elementary School next week. I look forward to that every year, hoping that everyone will be celebrating and acknowledging our veterans in one way or another. This is truly one of those opportunities, I think, for our students to embrace the history and to have individuals right there with them, often it's their grandparents, but others who are true heroes. So happy Veterans Day, everybody.
Mr. McElveen?
All I have to say is I'm still waiting on my kimchi.
Ms. Smith? Mr. Valkoff?
Pass.
Mr. Stork?
I just, one thing I needed to mention, it's really about the work session on Mondays, which is, we have particularly one aspect of the work session where we'll be talking with facilities. We have a very thick document that's just been posted that you all need to take a look at. Ms. McLaughlin and I will be harassing you, and that is the right word, to make sure that you've actually looked at the materials. These are my notes that are on it, but it's very thick. It's, not only has a narrative to it, but it also has individual matrices in here that talk about the needs of each kind of community and by region. So it is important that you look and you read it. You have to have read it, or we will not be able to get through about a small portion of it on Monday. So it is, it's actually, it's a build process from when you all met, I think, locally. I mean, you met regionally before, so it's not, you know, dissimilar to that, but it kind of compiles it all together. And because of that, and because of just frankly, the breadth of it, it's just a lot to digest in two hours. And I'm, and in addition to that, we are going to have an organization that the Superintendent has been working with, who has been looking at some of the demographic things that we've been doing, and will have some thoughts and ideas about that. So we have a lot that's packed into two hours, and we need your help.
And just real quickly, I just wanted the board to note that we actually have two work sessions planned on this discussion. The first in November, the second in December, because we do recognize it's a very in-depth conversation. So it won't be the final time to visit about it.
And it's an ideal follow-on to the CIP discussions, which we'll have in December and January as well. So it's a great opportunity to be prepared. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Ms. Strauss?
I had the opportunity to go to Cooper Middle School to attend a powerful demonstration of project-based learning. At Cooper, there is a plan at the end of each, at the end of each quarter, or during each quarter, students will be required to do a cross-curriculum project. And this particular presentation combined English History and Science, they were looking at designing the school of the future. It was stunning. Students had to do research dealing with, they were looking at the school of the future for Cooper when it gets renovated someday. But they were researching everything from best practice in what a school should be to presentation skills, to English development skills, to history, to the water flow on the school site. It was a wonderful, wonderful example of what a, what teachers can do, what students can do, really to fulfill the portrait of the graduate. I was just blown away. The parents were there. I see a parent here who was there. It was just a wonderful demonstration of what we can do if we really push ahead and are determined. So kids and teachers were fabulous. Good job, Cooper.
Ms. Evans?
Thank you. I was delighted to go to the Food Day at Mount Eagle Elementary School. It was just a wonderful, wonderful program, and everyone at the school and Real Food for Kids are to be congratulated on that, and I hope we can do more of those at some of our other schools. I also appreciate the principal and staff members at Belvedere Elementary School sitting down and going through the IB Primary Years Program. We, as board members know, this is the first school in Fairfax County to have the Primary Years Program, and they are just doing marvelous work, so I was very pleased to hear more about that.
Before you, Ms. Schultz, Mr. Stork has a go-back. Go ahead.
I apologize. I really need to mention something that impacts the whole county. We had the firefighters, which they've done every year for a long, long time. And I wasn't sure if anybody else had mentioned this, but I particularly wanted to thank Willie Bailey and really the whole fire department for everything they've done. We have lots of great members that are part of that. I know FCFT and FEA, many others are involved with making that happen, but they have raised thousands of dollars. They provide thousands of winter coats and this year shoes for our kids and any other kids. So it's just an amazing community get-together to make a difference for kids, and I just need to make sure that we recognize their wonderful efforts on our behalf. So thank you.
You're welcome. Ms. Schultz?
I just want to thank the parent volunteers who made the Robinson Marketplace this past weekend simply incredible. I'm wearing one of my wares from there and truly is one of my favorite events of all of my schools in the Springfield District. I want to appreciate, or say that I appreciate, the Irving Middle School Counseling Program for inviting me to the Fall Advisory. I attended with Dr. Atwater and Mr. Brent, and we had a very interesting discussion, very robust discussion, right after a pyramid presentation around mental health and wellness for students throughout the pyramid, so that they tried to draw parents in across grade levels, and was incredibly well-attended at West Springfield High School. I met both with the West Springfield and Irving principals and talked about a lot of unfortunately difficult subjects, but I think that we're beginning to tackle with Portrait of the Graduate. I want to wish Robinson cheer, good luck. They're headed to the state championships this Saturday, and I know that some of my colleagues are weary after the discussion. Again, we're not sweating it out, you know, in a second story in Pennsylvania in wool in the summer, and it's a republic if we can keep it. So I want to thank the members of our military and particularly our veterans for providing the republic, if we can continue to keep it, and the blanket of freedom that we had, the robust debate because of you and what you've done for us. And I look forward to celebrating with you at Sangster.
And tomorrow night, I will be attending Hayfield High School's Celebration of Dave Tremaine's Life. The students named it Orange, You Glad, You...
The students named it "Orange, You Glad You Met Mr. T." So keep it to those students. Love the sentiment. Look forward to celebrating Dave and the many contributions. And with that, and one last hurrah to Barbara, we are adjourned.